I will call to order the April 16th meeting of the Monmouth City Council. Phyllis, roll call please. Counselor Belz.
Here.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Sharmar.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel.
Here.
Counselor Silbernagle is excused. Mayor Koontz present. And the flag salute. Roxanne, will you please lead us in that this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this evening, I would like to welcome all of you to the Monmouth City Council and let you know that comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Citizen Comments. If you wish to speak to the council, please fill out a comment card and turn it into the city recorder. Speaker's comments in this forum are limited to three minutes, but the council welcomes additional information in writing. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the council to review an issue. However, the mayor or counselors may ask for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication, and if so, what avenue is preferred. Thank you for attending this meeting of the Monmouth City Council. And I will let you all know, we had scheduled a meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency this evening, and that did include an executive session. We do not have the material for that executive session, so we will not be holding the additional meeting for the Urban Renewal Agency this evening. So, we don't seem to have any public comments for the Urban Renewal Agency. All they were going to do is approve their minutes, so just let you know that's been changed. But we do have plenty of work to do tonight, so I will first entertain the approval of our consent calendar, which tonight consists of the minutes of council meeting by April 2nd.
So moved.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Consent agenda, consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
Thank you. So, we will get right on with presentations this evening. We do have a couple of those. And our first one, I will let city manager Scott McClure introduce our guest speaker.
Yep. So our speaker's a project manager, Vidal Francis, on the ODOT Highway 99 project. You probably know which project we're referring to. It's quite visible right now, so take it away, Vidal.
I have a small presentation that I'd like to present to you all. And again, thank you for having me here this evening. Every opportunity the agency relishes to speak with some of the good work that we're actually doing. We thank you for this opportunity. As you can tell, on 99 right now, we've got certain sections kind of opened up. Is the, is the, oh, it's booting up. Okay, thank you. Certain sections on Highway 99, we do have opened up, and things do look different from what it did a year ago or several months ago. And obviously, the contractor is on task. They're moving forward with what work they have to do in light of trying to complete this project prior to the December 2019 completion date that we do have. I have a few slides of it here that I'd like to just share with you, a few updates, some of the progress that we have done. Just as a reminder, again, what we're doing, we're reconstructing the highway there on 99 between Jackson and Madrona, and that's the typical configuration down at the bottom. Some of the features that we're doing is, you know, adding bike lanes on both sides for your pedestrian walks and putting in also, I want to say, some vegetation, trees and so forth that needs to go for the separation between the bike lanes as well as the pedestrian path there. And again, I did present this prior to the council here the last time I came. And again, that's what it should look like, rendition of what it looks like, what it should look like at the end of the construction season. Okay, some of the progress to date, I put some figures up there so you can kind of see some of the things that we've been doing. Obviously, right now, the picture to the left, we've put up a lot of temporary surfaces for pedestrians. Part of the effort is to put in a lot of drainage work, that's, or drainage pipes that need to go through. We've put in quite a few manholes. Also, we've been putting in some curbs, gutters, curb gutters and walks. And I put some figures down at the bottom. We've put in about 7,200 square feet of temporary surfaces. And again, we're going to come back and put in new walks, if you will, but the push right now is to get all that underground work completed prior to the major reconstruction that needs to happen along 99, so that we can tie or marry that in really well. We have also put in 12-inch, 18-inch storm pipes, as well as 24-inch storm pipes, quite a few feet of it in several locations throughout that whole section, tying into the systems that we have right now. And we're trying to do it in such a fashion, because if you noticed, over the past three weeks, two weeks, there's quite a bit of rain that has fallen. And we have felt it, okay? So in trying to make sure that our drainage systems work properly and water goes where it needs to go and we don't flood the city, if you will, we've been trying to piecemeal the work so that we can compensate for whatever weather activities that are happening. Okay, moving forward, how our schedule actually looks like, and again, this is just an overview of what we're going to be anticipating as we move to finish out this spring and then go into the summer as well as the fall. We want to finish throughout the spring, all our drainage work and all our flat work, meaning the concrete work that needs to be completed. And then as we go into the summer and fall, you're going to probably see some more flat work, and then those signals, we want to try to get those completed. If you look on 99 right now, we do have the poles with the mast arms up, but we haven't yet placed the signals themselves. The major push was to get those arms up so that we can start the reconfiguration as far as the full digouts that need to happen on 99. And then we'll be doing paving and then landscaping and punchless works, punchless items for the fall of 2019. I think one of the important things, I'm sure that this, you all are really concerned about, and this is one of the reasons why I put this particular slide on here, the full digouts, which will encompass about, maybe, I'd say about three feet, two to three feet of roadbed that needs to be removed and reconstructed up. I've outlined on the board, on the slides there, those general locations. We're talking from Jackson Street, just north of Jackson, all the way to just south of Madrona, and as well as those various intersections right there, Powell Street, Jackson Street, Main Street, Clay, and Madrona. We're right at those intersections, we may come out, I don't know the exact number, I think it's about 100 feet or what's not, so we can encompass that full intersection. And you probably noticed in some of the intersections, maybe a month, three weeks ago, we had some limited closures. That's so that we can get in there and do those drainage areas or replace those manholes, get them up to grade such that when we come and do these full digouts, the roadbed itself will just tie right in there at the appropriate elevations. With that, too, I do want to remind, or at least bring to everyone's attention that we do have full closures. Actually, not necessarily full closures is the right word, but we do have significant closures that's going to occur between July 8th and August 29th. Again, those timelines are based on when we think, or at least when we estimate, the least amount of impacts that we could do to the community. This is where we're going to do those major work on 99 there. It's going to look even more different as we move through there. Again, the way, the approach the contractor is going to do is, we're going to build the road one half at a time, okay? I will bring to our attention about the detours, and these detours are limited, and I think the last time I was here, there was one question from the council here about the detours, where they were going to be and how they're actually going to be laid out. As you look at the detour on the slide there, basically what we're doing is we're diverting traffic, if you will, to either to the east or to the west. And I would like to point out that the agency is not trying to divert truck traffic. This is only, these detours were set up so that our local people can get to their homes. And the reason why we're doing that is because, on the previous slide, let me go to this next slide. If you look at the, to the bottom, this, 99 is running horizontal, if you will, on the map here, and then Main Street is running up and down vertical. And if you look at the bottom half of that horizontal roadway, that's where we're going to have traffic running through along 99. So even though we have the detours moving, we will still have two-way traffic on 99, but that two-way traffic will not be allowed to make left turns. And as a result of that, the locals need to get to their homes. So the detours are set up to allow the locals to get to their home. If there's any truck traffic running through 99 during the time of construction, they will be allowed to continue pass through and just keep on going through Monmouth and so forth, to continue their journey. Again, the detours are basically set up to allow locals who can't make that left turn get back to their place of residence. And again, those detours are only going to be set up between July 8th and August 29, I think that the date that I had on there. Oops, I'm sorry. Again, I do have a flyer here that I did give to Scott, and he has them right there. He can hand them out so that you can kind of see. And this, again, this is just some information about the project, general information about the project, what work we're doing, how we're doing it and so forth, the different type of hours or work schedules, if you will, that the work will be completed under. We do have a webpage, a fact sheet in two languages. We also have a dedicated hotline. We've also been doing email updates for those who've signed up, and then we're also on social media. And we, we are also working with some of the utilities that are through there. Actually, we, I just got through talking with Russ here, trying to get some more specific information on some of the utilities that are on the project so that we can get them to help move a little faster on some of the work that we've got, that we have, that they need to do, such that we can accomplish our work a lot sooner. But nevertheless, we are trying to inform as much people as possible, such that, you know, no one is unaware, minimize any impacts that we may have on the public at large. We do have a public open house that is scheduled for April 23rd of this month. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's at the Monmouth Senior Center, Senior Center, and you are welcome to come. Ask me any, how do I say, I don't want hard questions, but give me some easy questions and I'll answer all of them. Okay? And again, I want to thank you, everyone here, and then also the community of Monmouth. You know, we've had some calls that come in with issues running here and there, but the city has been great with us as far as coordinating different issues. And I think at this point, so far, we haven't had anything that kind of just made things go upside down. We're kind of moving methodically, with a lot of intention and also with a lot of care and due diligence, such that we try to make everyone whole at the end of the day. Again, that's my basic presentation. I think that's the end, yeah. And I'm here to take any questions, if you have any.
I'd just like to make a quick comment. I am the Director of Finance and Operations at the school district, and I'm in charge of our bus service. Your folks have been really good about communication. Really, really appreciate that, and this is good, right? They already have this information. This is obviously going to be a change for us. Luckily, it's in the summer. We do have a few programs running, so we've got a little bit of work to do during those months of July and August, but just want to compliment you and the contractors are doing a really good job of.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I will pass the word on.
Yes.
Just have a quick question.
Counselor Sharmar.
I know it's hard to believe over the last few weeks that we could ever have a water shortage, but when this project was first starting, there was an indication that the beauty strips were going to be planted with Kanikkanik, a native drought-tolerant plant. Is it still in the works?
Oh, I would have to get that, get that answer back to you. And that's only because I don't know all the specific names of the plants that are going to be planted there without having the contract in front of me to read that. And I will get back with you on that.
As long as they're not Emerald Ash, right?
Well, any kind of ash tree.
Perhaps by the open house, you can help.
Kanikkanik is just how it sounds.
And that's the plants that are going to be planted along the planter strips, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Carey.
What will, yeah, we've removed some trees north of Ash Creek, particularly on the east side. What's going to happen out there? I know they're widening the bridge a bit. What's that going to look like?
We did remove some trees, as you mentioned, and those trees that were moved were hazard-prone trees that were adjacent to the highway, if you will, or part, within our right-of-way, obviously, that needed to be removed for hazardous reasons or what's not. From, from the bridge north, okay, from the bridge north, the bridge itself, we have been doing the rail sections on that structure. I believe the subcontractor who's working on it right now have been replacing, I believe they replaced one side already, and they should be working on the other side. And to my understanding, everything from north of the bridge itself should be repaved, if you will, but I don't believe it's going to have the same section that was.
Right, no.
Right, right. It won't have that same section. It's typically going to look pretty much as it does right now and light up the new surface, and then maybe some grading on the shoulders, et cetera, to make those, or at least have the drainage work the way it should work in those areas.
So the, so the removal of the trees really was, didn't have anything to do with the actual construction and what's going to happen. It was just sort of a.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Correct, correct.
And the largest complaint, and I haven't heard many, but one of the complaints that I have heard is the pedestrian crossings, east to west, west to east. And there are signs, and I know you've got, the detour signs, you know, are tall, and they almost look like traffic detour signs. I think they're really pedestrian, but I'm not asking for anything, I'm just simply commenting that that is not real clear for people to get across, and whether or not, you know, on some of the, the busier ones, if there could be a, you know, a temporary crosswalk put to identify that, although that probably isn't appropriate, but something. Anyway, that's a difficulty that I'm hearing.
And this is at, at all, at the, I believe there's two major, or at least there's two locations where a lot of paths tend to cross.
Right, there probably are three, at least nor, I'm thinking mostly north right now, and you've got down south as well, but, but on Jackson, Church, not Jackson.
Church.
Yeah, Church is problematic, and there is a bit at Jackson as well.
Right, currently, what we have there is, especially down towards the church side of things, because we know that we're tearing up the ground and we're moving things around, we do have our pedestrian plan, if you will, that outlines, within pedestrian view, which direction they need to follow as far as being able to cross the intersection there. We can, let me see what I can do to augment the situation, to provide more signage or, signage may not be, let me talk with my engineers, because sometimes we got some information out there and we don't want to put too much information, it has to be appropriate. What I will, what I have been doing, and it's a little bit harder to see this when you're driving in your vehicle, I have little stickers that are, or decals, if you will, that are placared on the ground that actually directs pedestrians, if you're going through the work zone here, like, maybe they're like every 20 feet. Where we have major work, especially like around the Dutch Brothers, where we were doing some major rerouting of folks, we actually had on the ground some pedestrian markers that actually point to which direction they need to be going in order to cross or get from one end of that work zone to the next end. And maybe, we haven't started using it down towards the church end, because to my understanding, at least we thought it was pretty plain, but we can certainly augment those in that particular area just to help the situation out.
Agreed.
And since we're on crossing 99, at Madrona, when I came down here tonight, I noticed there was a sign that said sidewalk closed, and then next to that was one that said, cross here, and then an arrow pointing that way. So are you supposed to cross there, or are you supposed to go across Madrona and?
Typically, the way those signs are set is, if you're actually standing in front of the sign, that's, it's going to tell you which information you need to know in terms of the direction you're walking into.
With that arrow.
So if you, if you walk into the sign and it says, hey, cross here, that means to turn, you know, 90 degrees so that you can make the crossing maneuver.
Maybe somebody could go and just point, paint in a little T, so it says cross there with an arrow.
Okay, okay. I mean, we.
Nail polish, little black paint.
And it may be that these pedestrian markers may be a location, which you're speaking about, that could be used right there to help augment the information for pedestrians needing to travel or go walk from one location to the next.
Thank you.
And I'll look into that as well.
Okay. All right. No other questions or comments, then thank you very much. We really appreciate the presentation, and we did get that flyer out in our water bill, so everybody in Monmouth got one of those that gets their bill in the old-fashioned way, so hopefully we're getting that information out, so. All right.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grant.
Thank you.
And we have another presentation, so again. And Mr. McClure, I'll have you go ahead and introduce our guests.
Yep, so this is one of the council's key goals for the year, actually continuing into next year, and this is setting up a stormwater utility. So this is our consulting group, FCS, and they're going to walk you through essentially the overview of all the steps they are going to take, you know, to get that set up, what public involvement will look like, and kind of some timeline questions, so.
We're on, right? Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Hi, I'm John Gillard-Ducci, and this is Doug Gabbert. We're with FCS Group, and together we are the leads of the project team that the city has hired to, to walk through this process that will hopefully solve the stormwater funding problem. The way that we've, the way that we've laid this out, I'll do a couple of slides on general background on the stormwater system, talk about the evolution of stormwater rates in the region, how we've gotten to this, to this point, and then Doug will walk through some of the key issues that we'll be addressing in the study. I'll talk about the level of service approach that, give you an example of a work product that you will see, and then we'll talk about the public engagement and our next steps. So this is what we know so far about the city's stormwater system. That picture was very conveniently in the city budget, but we know it's been a goal of the city to develop a stormwater utility and a supporting rate for at least a year or two, so that that, that funding can provide a stable resource so the city can address stormwater management and upcoming regulatory requirements. Some of the things we know about the city system, two major drainage basins, there is a network of pipes, catch basins, open drainage ditches that make up the stormwater system in the city of Monmouth. Some of the problems that the city's dealing with, minor flooding due to undersized pipes, and they're really, the city hasn't really been able to do any needed stormwater capital improvements in recent years, so there are some needs there that, that need to be addressed through construction improvements. So, I mentioned, this is, this is background on the city's system. One of the other reasons I'm showing this slide is because as we talk with you and as we talk with the community and we bring back results, one of the things we're going to focus on are the problems that we're trying to solve, so that people understand what they're buying, what they're going to be asked to buy with the stormwater rate. That's, that's a little less intuitive for people than water, turning it on and off, or electricity. So we're going to try and remind people throughout this process of what, you know, what, what the city hopes to accomplish in terms of services and visible services, so that people, again, will understand what they're being asked to buy. So a brief history of stormwater rates. When we saw the first stormwater rates in the region, the rates were really low, you know, a couple of bucks a month, and issues about the equity of the rates didn't really matter in those, in those early iterations. As we've seen, regulations come in and requirements to deal with water quality in addition to localized flooding and just water quantity management, the costs of these stormwater programs have gone up. And as those costs have gone up, rates have gone up, and concerns about the fairness of the rates have, of course, become more important. So, you know, we'll be working carefully to develop a, a simple rational rate structure that can be applied fairly in the city of Monmouth, so that folks are paying what they should be paying according to their contribution to the problem. As, as costs and rates have come up, so too have concerns about rate credits. You know, if I'm, if I'm doing something on my site to mitigate my stormwater runoff, should I get a rate credit for that? And we'll, we will be dealing with that as a policy issue and also as a technical issue. But that's, that's sort of the state of the industry right now. We're developing rates with an emphasis on equity and rate credit structures as well.
So now I'm going to guide you through a few issues at a very summarized level, issues that we will be dealing with in much more detail with staff and ultimately with you as the engagement progresses. But the first thing that we have to be able to address is if we're pretty confident we're going to end up putting a new fee on people's bills, we have to be able to answer the question, was there any other way? Is there another possible way that we could pay for these services that we need? And so I'm going to summarize for you that in theory, there are other ways to pay for stormwater services, and let's look at them. First of all, the street fund, which is your current practice, you already know that that's inadequate, so I don't really have to sell that to you. You could always use the general fund, but we know how scarce those dollars are and how many competing needs there are for general fund monies. There are special assessments, but that's a very localized way to finance very local infrastructure. You can't build a citywide utility on that. There are special fees for actual services performed, those are, those are one-off hourly rates, you can't build a utility on that either. There are system development charges, which will become more important as this utility matures. We're starting to get warmer here, these, these can be real dollars, but these are for capital only, they tend to be for growth-related capital, so operations are out on system development charges. Likewise, with debt, whether we're talking about revenue bonds or general obligation bonds, again, we're talking capital only, that's not going to help you pay for FTEs. Special grants and loans, those again tend to be capital only, highly competitive, they are, they can give you very favorable terms, but that's not anything you can rely on. So what you're really left with is a utility fee source of revenue as a staple, large enough, sufficient revenue source that you can count on. So let's dig a little deeper into what this utility concept of a utility fee is all about. The intent would be to set up a standalone fund that you would budget for and put in your CAFR, a standalone entity with revenues flowing in and expenses flowing out that can be accounted for in a transparent way on your books, to know what revenues are stormwater related. stormwater-related, what revenue, what expenses are stormwater-related. That fund would be designed to be self-sufficient and to recover all of the costs that it incurs. The revenues would be stable, and, and they would be dedicated to stormwater management, and you will put that term, that requirement in the ordinance that you will use to set up that fund. The revenues that you generate from a utility fee will be very flexible in the sense that you can use it for operations, you can use it for capital, and you can also pledge that revenue for debt service if you need to. A utility fee is well-suited to meet regulatory pressures, which seem to be ratcheted all the time, and so you will be able to, to meet those with a utility fee. Because it is a, it is a standalone accounting entity, it is very transparent to the public in how you account for it and how you budget it. And finally, the twofer here is that if you're not having to use street funds on stormwater, you could use street funds for street stuff, and so you'll be able to free up other monies for other uses. I keep going too into time here. So I've already stolen a little thunder of this slide, but this is kind of a visual way of comparing the various revenue sources for their suitability to fund your stormwater needs. If you look in the first two columns there that say operations and capital, you'll see there's a lot more black in the capital column than in operations, because it always seems to be true, doesn't it, that in government, it is easier to build stuff than to maintain stuff? That's because there's all kinds of money available for capital that is not available for operations. The thing about utility rates is it's flexible enough to be put wherever you need it, whether it's operations or capital, or being pledged for debt service. Street fund and general fund dollars tend to be tax-funded, and so there's not really an equitable way to fund a utility. What is being paid is not necessarily related to the service being received, and so those aren't very equitable ways to fund a utility. Likewise, those are more general-purpose dollars or can be used for other purposes, and so they're not really dedicated to stormwater, and so once a competing need comes up, those monies might be needed someplace else. And finally, the reliability column is all about the stability of the revenue stream. As I said before, you know, system development charges will ultimately become very important for your stormwater utility, but that in no way can be considered a reliable, stable revenue source. And so the conclusion that we almost universally draw is that the utility rate is the superior way to fund a stormwater utility, and we hope to be making that case in greater detail with you as the engagement progresses. So how do you do a stormwater rate? Well, first of all, you have to decide how you're going to charge, on what basis are you going to charge people, and as we will detail out in, in much greater detail, the most well-accepted and rational connection to stormwater service is the impervious surface area of a property. And so we need to define something that we're going to call an ESU or equivalent service unit, and that ESU will be defined as the average impervious surface area of a single-family residence. So we have an engineering partner that is taking a sample of your single-family residence parcels, calculating the impervious surface of the observations in that sample, and we're going to be coming up with an average impervious surface area for a single-family residence. Once we have that average, we now know what an ESU is. What we can do with that ESU is go to your non-residential parcels, which includes commercial, it includes the university, it includes apartment complexes, anything that's not a single-family residence. We can actually measure their individual impervious surface area and use that as a multiplier against the ESUs and come up with a number of ESUs for each individual non-residential property, and that is how a utility rate would typically get charged. So once you decide how you're going to charge, and you're treating everybody equally, everybody's impervious surface area equally, inevitably, the question arises, what if somebody is doing something to mitigate their stormwater runoff that somebody else isn't doing? Is there a possibility for granting credits? Even if the impervious surface areas are the same, somebody is taking measures that somebody else isn't, and should there be a way to equalize that with a rate credit? So it is true that because this is a fee-for-service concept, that's what a utility fee is, we definitely want there to be a nexus between the amount of money paid and the service received. And so if someone takes steps to require less service, we want them to be able to get a break as far as the money that they need to pay. The way to do that, the most logical way to do that, is to calculate a credit that is based upon the costs avoided by the utility. So if you do something to help the utility save money, you should be credited back that money that you saved the utility, which probably makes sense. The, the bad news tends to be that you'd never save the utility as much as you think you would, because as with all utilities, a lot of costs tend to be fixed. But, but there are cost savings, and those can be captured in a rate credit. So if someone develops a property not just meeting the current standards, but actually exceed those standards in a way that, that they don't have to, they could potentially earn themselves a credit that would be applied and then verified and enforced with a whole administrative mechanism that we have yet to talk about. It is usually the case that there is sufficient bureaucracy involved in this, that these credits are often not allowed for single-family residences. That's a policy choice, but the reason we come to this conclusion has to do with this visual. There is always a trade-off in rate credit programs between the equity, the proportionality of the costs incurred to the utility, and we want to be fair and make people pay only what they really owe, on the one hand. On the other hand, we, we don't want to create a whole department of people running around to make sure that people are keeping their, their gutters not connected to a certain pipe and making sure they're doing what they said they were going to do. That could make everybody pay more, and so we want to avoid that as much as possible. So it's a series of trade-offs. I don't want to make the rate credit conclusion sound obvious, because it's not obvious. It's a trade-off, and that is something that we'll be exploring with staff as the engagement goes on.
Thanks, Doug. So the other, and I see that's, that writing's a little bit small, but it's an example anyway of, of a work product that we're going to be back to talk with you about. One of the other key pieces of information in the rate calculation that our engineering partner, Keller Engineers, is working on, is shown in part here. It's the costs. We need to know what the costs are of this program that we are going to be recovering in this rate. So what we've asked them to do is to tell us three things, three different levels of service and their accompanying costs. One, we're calling status quo, so tell us what the city's doing now and how much that costs. We've, we've filled this out with example language, but some of it holds true for the city of Monmouth. If you could read the maintenance column, at that status quo level, we're saying mostly the city's doing reactive system maintenance. And you respond to failures, respond to emergencies, that's, but the city's done a great job of doing that with the resources that it has. The problem is the, that strategy leads to deferred maintenance, and you can end up in a very expensive situation later if you're just responding to emergencies as they happen. So, but anyway, we've asked Keller to cost out what the city's doing now for their different program components, and then if the city were to be more proactive and go out and do system maintenance before there's a failure, get at some of the capital projects that we know are needed, that short list of capital projects, what would those costs look like? And then what would the costs look like for a more optimal, more comprehensive program? And what we will come back to you with is a menu that shows you these service-level choices and what the resulting rates are, so you know, again, what you're, what you'd be buying at each of those optional service levels. So, so that's what you can expect to see in, in bigger print, and with dollars accompanying it, so that you know what the rate choices are and what services to expect at each of those different rate levels. We, our other partner is Barney &amp; Worth. They are a public relations firm. We have, we have, we're planning to do up to four open houses. We met with Western Oregon University this afternoon, just to give them a, a heads-up that this is coming. They'll be the largest customer in all likelihood, so we want to include them in the process and make sure that they, you know, they know what's happening. We think that went well. We'll be back, of course, to talk with you, and that's, that's the plan going forward. This, this will take several months, but shouldn't take longer than that. That's what we've got.
All right. Questions? Yes?
I have a question. When my neighbors come to me and say, we're going to be paying a new fee for a stormwater utility, how is this going to benefit me? What should I say to them?
Well, and we will, as, as we progress through this project, we will have more specific answers for you. That's part of what Keller is doing. But in general, it will allow the city to better address localized flooding, and we already know that there were some, there are some issues in the city right now with, with hotspots, if you will. It will allow the city to address those. It will allow the city to better address water quality from runoff and just, and help provide a, a better functioning stormwater management system, which benefits both, both reduction in local flooding and water quality.
Any chance that you're going to be recommending that property owners get any kind of rebate or credit if they change some of their hardscaping to permeable landscaping? I know you can't do that with your roof, and we probably can't do it with the streets, but there's an awful lot of hard driveways and-
Right.
-concrete patios that are found that the water all just runs off of them.
So, yes, there's, there's a chance. The, we talked about that a little bit in our meeting with WOU today. Certainly, if a non-residential customer is reducing the amount of impervious surface area, their, their charges will go down, because you are charged for only that surface which retards infiltration. I've heard different things about permeable, you know, pervious pavement, for example. It needs to be maintained for its to, for it to sustain its effectiveness, so you'd want to make sure that you, that the city had some ability to, to make sure that it was being properly maintained. To offer those ki, those kinds of rate reductions for single-family residences, while, while a nice thing to offer for the reasons Doug was describing, it can be, the administrative burden of doing that can far outweigh the benefit, because there are simply so many single-family residential customers, and you're talking about a rate break that really might be a couple of bucks. Where the real money is, is in those non-residential commercial customers and where they can see some significant savings. So that's why the focus is usually on those customers. But it is a policy choice. The city could decide, hey, if we have single-family residents who's willing to do this, we're going to give them a $1 break on the rate, you know? But that's, that's, we'll probably be recommending that those be available only to non-residential customers.
And if I may, just one more quick question. Can you tell me how this stormwater utility will benefit the environment?
Well, the city is not yet, so, so the regulatory requirements that are affecting many larger cities in the region, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permitting requirements come from the EPA. They're administered by DEQ. They, they will require the city to do things like monitor runoff into receiving waters, to enforce construction, mitigation at construction sites. All of these are directly beneficial to water quality. The city does a few of these things now, but we expect these regulations will apply very soon in the city of Monmouth. So, so the city is positioning itself to deal with these regulatory requirements that are directly, and all about water quality. And anytime you're managing water quantity, or I should say, many times, if you are retaining it so that it can infiltrate, for example, that has a water quantity and a water quality benefit. That's essentially how you treat stormwater runoff. Then you mow the vegetation in the, in the pond and dispose of it, and you've effectively treated it. So I hope that answers your, answers your question.
It, it did, aside from the fact that there are a number of cities here in Oregon that are bringing a lawsuit against the requirements to put in these stormwater utilities. What's the latest on that? Do you know?
I don't know.
You don't?
That, we can get that for you, because Keller will know that, our, our engineering folks, and I will, I will, I'll ask them for that.
Thank you.
Chris Lopez.
Earlier in your presentation, you men, you mentioned administrative costs. In your experience, what is the average percentage of each dollar that goes into a stormwater utility go toward admin fees?
So that, that varies a lot. What we would expect to see is because the city, you know, we're not talking about adding any administrative folks as, with the onset of this utility, if it does come to be. You already have a public works director, you already, you know, so those are the program managers, and all they would be doing is, is allocating a small amount of their time to the stormwater utility. Any additional staffing would be direct service delivery, maintenance, operations of the stormwater system, so we, we don't expect the addition of any administrative staffing or costs to the city, if that makes, if that makes sense.
And I, I guess I, I was perhaps unclear. Once again, administrative costs were mentioned as a factor in trying to keep, keep, keep some of these things down, and it won't be something additional that's, that's a cost to the city. I understand that, but within the different options, there are different levels of service that, you know, will take up time, have the potential for increased, increased staffing hours, staff being assigned to do things that they weren't previously doing. And, and I guess my, my question is, out of the dollars that people take out of their pockets and put toward this stormwater utility, what goes toward actual physical infrastructure and what goes toward added admin costs as a result of some of the decisions we may make?
Okay. So thank you for the opportunity to clarify. Administrative costs were mentioned in the context of rate credit programs and the trade-off between programs that are highly detailed and even allow single-family residences to benefit from them versus less generous programs. And there, there's, it's a pretty stark trade-off in the sense that any kind of credit that you have to grant will require some level of verification and checking to make sure that they are doing what they're getting credit for. And so if that is allowed to happen in, in the single-family population of properties, then you could have folks who need to get hired so that they go out and check things in a way that will create more cost that is then getting transferred, and that's the kind of administrative costs our recommendations will help you avoid, because we think that's a bad trade-off.
Gotcha.
If that makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, good. Okay, thanks.
And Councilor Carey?
I, I've got a couple of them, and-
I, I've got a couple of them, and, um, I, I hope they'll be fairly quick. You talked about levels of service and that we want to index the fee to the level of service. Who's going to determine that level of service? In other words, how good is it going to be? I've got a, I've got a big puddle and a bad rainstorm at the end of my street, and it's a bit of a hassle, but it's not a big deal. How quick do we want to get that out of there, and what's going to be the cost difference? I mean, i- if it's going to be there for two hours, that's going to cost us one thing. If I want it out of there in 15 minutes, that's the next.
Right.
Who's going to set that level of performance, if you will, that level of service?
So, uh, I guess the first part of that question is, I, I don't think we'll be dialing down at that granular, granular, uh, level. But if you could accept generally reactive maintenance where you're calling because they're, because that, that flood, localized flood, has been there for a week and nothing's happening, and the city comes out and has to repair it, rather than they are proactively trying to identify these trouble spots before they become trouble spots and do the maintenance on those before it becomes a problem, those, those will be costed out as level of service options, and you, as the council, will get to choose which of those you deliver to the city and at what cost. We, we will tell you what the cost will be. It will be your choice what service level you choose to provide.
Good. Thank you. Doug, you mentioned that, that a utility fee such as this would be able to be flexible enough to be able to handle any sort of regulatory uptick. Uh, how's that possible? I mean, and, and unless there's a built-in increase, I, I, you know, I don't know. I mean, all of a sudden, if we've got a significant requirement now to treat our stormwater before it goes into the local creek, how are we ever going to manage that?
You will have the flexibility to adjust that fee at, at a council level. So, so as, if this is not something you need to go to a vote for, uh, this is something that at the council level, uh, year to year, or at whatever interval, interval works for you, this fee can be adjusted, up or down, without really any limitations.
Okay. So that would be a, that would be a council decision. And if we're not going, back to Councilor Sharma's inquiry regarding residential credits, perhaps, what would the incentive be of, for a developer that's going to develop a, um, a subdivision to include rain gardens or collection basins or that sort of thing, which may not be necessarily, it may be a good selling point, but it may not be very, uh, you know, good business. What would the incentive of that be if we're not going to reward those property owners?
That's a fair question. It, it, there would be very, there would be very little, if, if you went with a rate structure credit that we would likely recommend, you are right in intuiting that there would be very little incentive to go above and beyond the sta- the minimum standards for residential properties. Uh, in, there will be a minimum standard that all properties have to address for their stormwater, but credits which are typically granted on non-residential for going above and beyond those standards, if you don't make them available for single-family residents, you are correct that that incentive doesn't exist. Our response to that would be to say, "In general, that's okay, because there's not much savings to the utility for doing those things either." So you're really not, you're not hurting anything, if that makes sense.
Well, maybe so, but, but if we'd like to be, you know, good stewards of our land, and, and I would argue that, and I don't, and I'm not in that business, but I mean, if you've got, if you're going to collect a lo- a fair amount of water into a collection area that will slowly go into a pipe once it gets to a certain level, you, you've got smaller pipes. Requirement for that's going to be smaller pipes, so that's going to cost less.
Absolutely. And so if you make that your standard, then you have an opportunity to make everybody abide by that. So that would be a way to accomplish that. And, and if you do that, that becomes a standard that everybody has to meet, and therefore nobody would be entitled to a credit as a result of meeting that standard.
Yeah, it's easy for new developments and difficult for existing, of course. But, but we could, if we chose to, we, we could incent those people that are going to develop outside of the storm fee.
Absolutely.
Yes. Yeah. And I, I guess the one other thing that I'll, I'll add is, if, uh, if folks are doing rainwater harvesting, um, for example, they would see a reduction in their water bill because they're using less water, but you wouldn't necessarily need to provide them a, a credit to the stormwater rate for doing that. And, and we do see that.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
All right. And Councilor Schinkel.
Can you, can you discuss or describe if there's a relationship between an initial capital outlay? So you're, you're going to go around and, and look at the infrastructure as well as, as our processes, I assume. So is there a relationship between a larger initial capital outlay in infrastructure and a lower maintenance cost going forward? Or is there really, um, not much of, I guess what I'm saying is, can, can you spend more money on the front end and save money in the long run with, with, uh, with, with a program like this?
I, and there are probably others who could better speak to this. We're finance guys, but, but, um, I, I can think of examples where that would hold true when you are replacing old infrastructure with newer infrastructure that's just going to require less ongoing maintenance, or the maintenance is more easily accomplished. And, uh, the other thing is that we have a, we have a short list of known capital projects that we will be working with on this initial rate. Sooner or later, the city's going to need a, a stormwater plan that would identify, probably a more comprehensive list. So we, we will be looking at the known issues here and, and, uh, at least to get, to get started. And, and beyond that, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, replacing, and I think that, um, you know, if you were talking about regional facilities, which I don't know are, are an option, that can reduce maintenance, because you have just a few larger facilities to maintain. But I don't know that that's a direction the city will be, will be going in general.
Generally, you know, we were talking about administrative, uh, costs earlier and how they relate to, you know, whatever programs you develop for those. Generally, though, these will add bodies, add headcount, once you've, once you've implemented these plans? As far as direct service, or do, do you generally have to hire more, more people? Or is it, is it low enough maintenance where you can allocate that stuff to, to the existing headcount that you have?
So, so we don't, we don't know that yet, but I think that, uh, just, just the concepts we've been talking about, very few added bodies.
Okay.
Uh, because a lot of this could be accomplished with existing staff and, and, you know, at one or two type, um, FTEs to provide direct, direct services. Is that, and Russ, I hope, will correct me if I'm wrong on that.
All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for that presentation.
Thank you.
We really appreciate that, and, um, I'm, I'm also wondering if these, um, getting these presentation materials on our website, so if people want to read the fine print, if we can get copies of those and-
You have a copy of this one.
Upload it. Perfect. That way, folks who want to get more information can, can look at the detail. That would be terrific. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will see you again.
Yes.
All right. And moving into the regular portion of our meeting, and we have several reports tonight, and we do have several of our committees here, so in honor of that, I am actually going to, um, to say that I don't have much to report on the mayor's report. So I'm going to go ahead and skip this opportunity to talk and move into some of our other opportunities for all of us to talk. And that is to report on the work of our boards and commissions. And so I will start off, I actually have two boards and commissions that meet between our first meeting of the month and our second, and that is the Arts and Culture Commission to start with. And thanks to all of us kind of talking about this, I guess, I don't know why there's been a turnaround, but, um, the new member we appointed last time constituted a quorum for the Arts and Culture Commission. So we had an official meeting. We were able to approve the minutes of a meeting some many, many months prior, last time there'd been a quorum. So, uh, had a great discussion, and we actually have another person who's applied, got some really good feedback, and looking at maybe some opportunities to, to do some new events we have talked about. So I expect that actually at the May meeting, I'll, I'll even have some better news for you about the Arts and Culture Commission. It was a great, great conversation and excited to have new folks involved. I then met with WIMPEG, and that is our community access channel, and, um, that one is in a little bit different situation now. We have an intergovernmental agreement between ourselves, Independence, and Western Oregon University to provide our public access channel, public education and government channel. Right now, I'm the only official person on that, um, ORS 190 per the intergovernmental agreement. The, uh, appointed person from the city of Monmouth is no longer able to attend the meetings that are scheduled during the workday. The person who was, um, the city councillor in Independence is no longer on council, so they appointed a new person who also can't meet during their regularly scheduled daytime meetings. So I'm going to be working with Mayor McArdle, and we're going to be trying to figure out if we need to re-change the meeting times and dates. And the only employee at the moment of the public access channel, Deborah Rozell, our public access coordinator, try to figure out what works for her and how we'll do that. But we do have a group of folks who are working as a 501(c)(3), basically supporting, uh, WIMPEG's operations, and, and I'm going to try and also help support those folks to, to get going. So WIMPEG will keep on running. We're just going to get the governance in order. That was my report from that meeting. And Councilor Beltz, Historic Commission.
So the Historic Commission, um, we, uh, let's see, we met, I can't remember, about a week ago. We're, uh, working on a library display that will be, um, obviously in the library in the month of May. It's going to showcase the historic Highway 99 route through Monmouth, so historical photos. They've been doing quite a bit of research, so that should be really good. Look, go for that in, uh, May in the library. And then, um, the commission is also working on having an open house on May the 30th, 7:00, right here at Volunteer Hall. They're going to highlight the results of the historic research of, of, for two of Monmouth's oldest buildings. So that's the Monmouth Improvement Building, which is where the Crush Wine Bar is, and the Fuller Building, which is at 342 Monmouth Avenue South. So May 30th, 7:00, right here. And I'll just move right on to my next, um, report, which is the Library Board Report. So, um, the CCRLS is providing a new service for patrons. It is an automatic renewal. So if you've checked out an item and it can renew automatically, you will get an email saying, "Your item has been renewed." And so you can, uh, you can keep it until the point in which it says, "Now it's time to return it." Libraries in the planning process for a volunteer in-service training that will be held this summer. And lastly, the Virginia Gillis Memorial Evening will be held Saturday, June 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and local author John Larison will be the speaker. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. And Councilor Schinkel, Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation met on April 10th, and there were just a couple of items that we discussed. We discussed the, uh, the master plan, uh, the project timeline, so we're looking at about a six or seven month timeline to, to complete that. According to the timeline, uh, have it approved and completed in October sometime. There's going to be an initial focus group, and so we discussed what kind of stakeholders who, who we would want in that focus group to talk about, uh, the plan, what we need, what we'd like to see going forward, and that kind of thing. And then lastly, we spoke, uh, about the grant process, just a debriefing on, on how, how that went. Uh, we got a historical overview of how much, uh, we had, uh, budgeted over the last 10 years or so. It was actually a really nice chart. And, um, uh, just discussed how we'd like to see more on the process, or more, more follow-up from the grant recipients afterwards to show what the money was used for, that kind of thing, so we can continue to justify that. So it was a, it was a good discussion. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. And so presumably, um, the group, or at least Suzanne Duffner, will be reaching out to those stakeholders that you identified and getting folks involved in the focus group, and-
Right. Yeah.
There'll be a lot more opportunity for public engagement after that, I believe. So, all right. Thank you very much. And Councilor Carey, the Planning Commission.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Planning Commission met last on, uh, April 3rd and approved a, a variance in the sign ordinance, uh, for, uh, Total Health Community Clinic, which is, uh, um, down, gosh, I'm, I'm blanking, Atwater, perhaps, the, the street that dives off of, um, uh, Main Street there. And to allow better access, uh, so people can recognize and find where, where it is, uh, seemed to be a pretty, a pretty wise choice right there. And there was also a discussion about the possible, uh, variation of the Main Street District. That's on our work session agenda that we'll be talking about later on. That was productive. Uh, next meeting is tomorrow night, actually, 7:00 p.m., and, uh, primary agenda items for that meeting will be, um, site plan reviews for the Ash Creek Station, laying out what, what some of those might look like, and a bit of a modification on the, on the, uh, the layout of the overall parcel. So, uh, that's 7:00 tomorrow, right here, River City. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. So yes, that's, that's always exciting news. The Planning Commission does great work. Um, and speaking of arts and culture, we did, uh, councilors, you did receive the application for another member of that commission, Ellen Osborne. Ellen wrote a great application, sort of really talking about the broader vision of the Arts and Culture Commission. It's had a pretty heavy focus on visual arts the last couple of years, and she has some other ideas that really tie in nicely with the rest of the group that's, that's gathering. So I would, um, welcome a nomination for Ellen Osborne to the Arts and Culture Commission.
I move that Ellen Osborne be appointed to the Monmouth Arts and Culture Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and all in favor of that appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
And thank you very much. Happy to have her. She's a longtime resident who actually moved out of state, and she's back, and I'm pleased to be able to welcome her to the group, so. At this point, we have any community announcements? What's going on out there, folks?
I have one. Um, I know it's hard to believe, but in just two and a half months, it's going to be time for the Monmouth Independence Rotary Club Grand Fourth of July Parade. Um, our theme this year is "From Many Nations One," and we have a new entry category, and that is families. So big bunches of families can get a banner with all the family names on it and march down the street together. Um, in the judging, extra, um, points will be awarded to families that, where the members dress in the traditional garb of their ancestors. And also, there will be a new entry also in the parade, um, which is called the Low Expectations Marching Band, and, um, you may join that band and march along, and if you don't have a musical instrument, with the, the leader of the band will provide you with a kazoo. And, um, so just step right in, no rehearsals necessary, and you can have the fun of being in a, a band in a parade. So don't forget, um, July 4th, high noon, right over here. And if you want an application to, uh, to join the parade, um, you can ask one of the Rotarians here tonight about how to do that, and that is Scott McClure or me. So, thank you. Look forward to seeing you out there.
That's right. Anything else in the community? I know we have a lot of Easter egg hunts this weekend and a lot of activities for families and kids coming up in, um, several of our parks and several of our churches, so it should be a, hopefully the weather will be a little better, and we can enjoy a good spring weekend. Anything else? Anything else? All right, then, we shall turn to Scott McClure, our city manager. We've got a couple of reports from you tonight.
We'll start with financial reports.
Oh, well, then we'll start with our finance director, Janet Shannard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and honorable council members. So I bring you a fairly positive third quarter report. Hopefully you've had a chance to read it. On the general fund front, things are looking fairly good. The, the revenues are better than expected, as I've talked about in the last couple of meetings, and the, the thing that I would highlight this meeting is that the departments are all coming in just at or under budget, so I think we should see some savings in the general fund, which we anticipate every year, but we don't always want to count on until about this time of year. And so I don't have much more to say about the general fund that's new, but we did get a marijuana tax turnover again that was, again, higher than what we were anticipating, so that has helped a little bit. And we're, we're not having any of the issues that some of our compadres are having with, with collections issues with our particular companies, so that's a good thing, too. As far as the utility funds go, the only one that is, is still having some challenges is the water fund. But that said, I don't anticipate having to come to you with a contingency transfer this year. There is some capacity in materials and services, and your public works director is doing a great job of monitoring it and making sure that we stay within budget. So that is the good news on the utility funds. I would skip then to the gas fund and the building fund as two that I would like to highlight this time as ones that I probably will be bringing in a contingency transfer, either in May or the first meeting in June. Because with the gas fund, we did have a fuel tank leak that, again, the public works director is diligently juggling amongst his many other responsibilities to, to resolve, and so we're spending a little bit of money on that, getting that corrected. And so that will undoubtedly result in an overage that I will bring to you once I am able to quantify it, before we go over.
Of course.
And then with the building fund, again, that's all good news. We're, Larry's making money hand over fist, and, and so, but we're having to spend money in order to do that with our staffing. And so, again, that will either be in the form of a contingency transfer or a supplemental budget. We could do either, whatever seems most effective and, and efficient, I'll bring that forward to you. The only other thing that I would highlight, since I know you've read it, but is that I just added in a graph this time that I thought kind of told a nice story about our investment earnings, which are also helping not just the general fund, but the other funds as well. And that, again, is a reflection of our local government investment pool, which they managed to, to keep the risk at an acceptable level and yet have very good returns. And so I still have not done all that investing that I had hoped to do, because it just doesn't make sense to do when we've got good liquid money at such palatable rates. So anyway, with that, I take your questions. If any.
No?
I know you're not responsible for bringing in this extra revenue, but it seems like you are, so thank you.
Well, you have to be careful. Even if we got a whole bunch of extra revenue, we can't just spend it.
No, this is true.
That's why donors better than your little transfers.
Yeah. Better than trying to lose it.
Better than, yes. Trying to lose it. Okay. Thank you very much. And now.
Thank you so much. All of your council polls, kind of focusing on that part of the third quarter status report. Your first one is approach to city hall upgrade. Key items are, we got our consultants selected, they've been doing a lot of good work, and then tonight, just in a moment, they'll give you some information on a decision point we have, kind of moving the progress forward, how we want to get going. Second one up was establish a path through the UGB expansion, urban growth boundary expansion. Our last big step was getting the housing needs analysis completed. Each documentation comes back to, we don't have a whole need to go out, but there could be some adjustments or something. The next step there would be actually really then now, looking at the comprehensive plan, what exactly would we want to do, going through all the code side of that to get that done. That one we're not pretty much working to do right now because of development, we're just inundated with development right now, so that had to be put on hold a little bit. Stormwater funding, you just heard that. One note I wanted to make there is that the, with the community outreach, like I said, we specifically did Western Oregon. We also sent out specific postcards to most of our kind of bigger accounts. We're also getting directly with the rental companies. That's actually fairly easy, so we want to get to those bigger ones, because they're all going to have differential calculations on their properties, depending on the impervious surface. So we've already started reaching out to those, you know, Buy More at Burgerville, you know, the bigger entities in town, so. And the next one up was the commercial retail portfolio, which was complete. Transportation plan, council took a first review on that and then requested that we go back through some of our specific boards and commissions. We got that work complete. We're going to talk about it at the last meeting, and then we got backed up, so that will come up in the near future, and then hopefully the idea is get some rough direction on where you'd like to go with some of those pots of money that we do have in place right now. And then last one there is citizen engagement. Council did revise the town hall format, so we need to actually experiment with that a first time. The housing needs, we did some different levels of outreach there, had a specific, you know, open house on that. And as I noted, the stormwater utility, we're already reaching out on the very front end of the project. So with that, I'll answer any questions and/or anything else in the packet, any of the department.
Right. So there were some other goals for departments there. If you got a chance to read through those as well, you could ask questions about those at this time.
Sort of a comment, I think we talked a little bit about this in our goal-setting sessions, and I'd like to, when we have, and I think you've talked about having a revisit of some of those, I'd like to have a discussion about how we can link the, the department goals to the council goals a bit more tightly.
There you go. That's, that's exactly what I want to see, so.
And no problem with the goals as they are, I just, I just prefer to have a little more clean lineage there.
Probably if you take this one, and this one, and this one, and this one, you actually create more of a goal than a task or a project, yeah. Okay. So hearing none, do you have other information for us? Anything else?
Move along.
We shall move along. We do have a lot to cover this evening. I am very excited now to hear from members of our Monmouth Engaged Committees. This was a process that was undertaken just as I left council four years ago and got these groups through, through a community engagement process that we went through and identified what are some of the things we really wanted to see. And then we formed citizen task forces on those items and got a bunch of smart people together to come up with great ideas about things we could do and kind of let them loose. And I'm excited to hear where they think they are and what they're working on now or want to work on next that we can help with. So do we have any particular order planned for them? For our groups? Okay. So who wants to go first?
Start with.
Alphabetically, Bikehead would go first.
Alphabetically, yes.
You could go alphabetically.
Okay. So we'll have, have each chairperson or speaker for the group introduce yourself and your committee that you represent, and then who your fellow committee members are, if you've got that information.
My name, can you hear me? My name is Maggie Triplet, and I represent the Monmouth Engaged Retail Restaurant Committee. Our chairperson was Holly Tangeman, she couldn't be here tonight. We had Randy Lowry, myself, Shirley Reed, and Phyllis Bowman was our liaison with the city. We did have a couple of other members who, for one reason or another, decided that they couldn't come anymore for. So we started out by looking at the surveys, various surveys that have been done over the years in the city and what people wanted, and we also looked at what, what was on the public meetings and the records and that sort of thing. And Phyllis attended some of the committee meetings and assistance with the city programs and new business information, and she gave us process guidance and some research and things that we needed. And we also, Holly went and attended the Travel Oregon class, and she presented findings and information back to us about what, what we could do to communicate with the retail and restaurant owner managers and that sort of thing. And we also decided to do another survey with the students to see what they were thinking about and what they were wishing and that sort of thing. And the main things that came forth was they all want a sit-down restaurant, which ties in with what the community wants as well. They did wish we had weekly restaurant specials and more connection to Woo during events in high traffic, so like when Woo was having something going on on the campus that we were open a little bit later, or things like that, so that they could engage more with the city, with the restaurants and our businesses. And so after all of that was done, we decided that we, we really couldn't go out and recruit restaurants and businesses. They wanted more retail as well in the, in the city. And so the best thing we could do was to help our businesses be more informed about what was available to them. So we put together a packet, and Travel Oregon had some really good things to put in the packet for the businesses, which was like to show them where you would find small business loans, where you would, what would happen with Travel Oregon and how they could engage with that and help with tourism and that sort of thing. City facade grant information, and it was available to all businesses. So we did boots on the ground. We divided and conquered, and we all went around and talked with all the businesses and provided this information for them and asked what we could do to help them, or did they have any questions or that sort of thing. And we felt like that was our best approach as far as helping with that, because we can't really recruit that. So anyway, that's basically, we felt like we'd kind of come to the end of our rope, so we have recommended that we have completed as much as we possibly can do. We do attend the MBA meetings, and we have engaged with the Chamber of Commerce so that we stay connected in any way that we can in that way. But we feel like that we have really served and gone to our capacity of what we can do now, and we are not sure, we're happy to serve the city, we just are not sure how, where to go from here. So that's basically what I have to report. And I gave you a copy, so if you wanted to know all details or whatever, you'd have them. Are there any questions?
Anybody?
Thank you, Maggie.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Maggie. And the Petals and Vines is looking very, very nice.
Yes.
I've heard a number, number of people say, "This is what stores should look like in a small town," so.
Urban renewal.
Yes.
Yeah, I think what we will do, we will continue to talk about this, maybe take up a work session or when we do our goal-setting, and see what else can be done. I, I think that's, the work is great, and like you say, you feel kind of like you're at an end, but there's more to do, because maybe we didn't meet all the goals you thought you might have at the beginning, so what are the resources we need to get that going? So, thank you.
I approach, your honor.
You may, please. Please introduce yourself.
This is how Phyllis doesn't have to.
Wow.
Title like crazy, that's what I'll talk about. And these are letters that we went around to all the area restaurants and distributed them. So we did this in conjunction.
This is the double whammy, two committees.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Susan, I need a copy of that for the record.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
Sorry.
I printed off 60, and I have about 12 left.
Very good.
That means there were about 50-ish that we visited. Okay. So the University Community Connections Committee, we have to change the name, it's a mouthful, but it's okay, we're getting used to it. Our purpose is to investigate new ways that the city and Western Oregon University can work together, bridging town and gown. And our members are Jennifer Bracy, me, Susan Fuller, Erin McDonough, Emily McNulty, Kristen Marrow, and Dwight Triplet. Our city liaison is Chris Dobrist, and I'll tell you what we've done in just this last year. Our first year, this is, we're coming up on three, I think, isn't it? Our first year, we worked hard on communication, so we tried to put together a community calendar, tried to get all the information from various sources posted on both the university's calendar website and also the chambers. Eh, people still don't check it. So we're, it wasn't a failure, it was just an exercise. And other things we talked about, we talked about a campus community dialogue, having something where the, we contacted the faculty at Western and asked them what special projects they were working on, and maybe we could have some kind of a lecture series or something like that. Well, that was a lot of work and realized that the academic excellence showcase might be a whole lot easier, just feed off of the university's efforts to showcase their students and their projects. So what, you may hopefully have received our little save the date postcards, May 30th, that happens again. Free parking, gang, on that day. Let's see. We sent this, oh, we also discussed with, and this has been a while, so Maggie, I don't know if you remember, but we did talk with the Retail Restaurant Committee about having a public lecture workshop panel series for small business development, where we could do topics that would be of general interest to our businesses and community. So that would be more on like developing a successful business, get somebody from the business department, something like that. And that, we have scooched out of the way for a while, because right after that, we started putting all our efforts into Making Spirits Bright. And that was our big, big deal. And we are going to do it again. We've changed the date. Last year was the weekend after Thanksgiving, when students were gone. And so we didn't see too many of our university students, or the high school students, or the families. It was a good turnout for the first time go around. So this year, because we didn't want to interfere with an event going on in Independence, this year, we're going to work together, maybe we'll just have it earlier in the day, but we're going to have it the Saturday after the tree lighting, which is, makes more sense. So when everybody's in a happy, jolly mood after the tree lighting and the parade, and we'll have downtown decorated again, we'll have the competition again, we'll have the fun, the games, the entertainment. We'll have everything that we had last year, but bigger. And then we've got a new thing. We've added a reindeer race and thank you to the park and rec department, and we got a $500 grant for that. We have a couple of people from the university who are putting together the course. It'll be a 1K, 5K fun run. We'll encourage families, costumes, well-behaved dogs, wheelchairs, strollers, so that's the 1K gang. And then the 5K group might be coming at the front of the line, and that'll be timed. Everybody gets a T-shirt. It's, it'll just be a great kickoff for our event. So that's what we've got going. We had a meeting, our first meeting of 2019 was with Adri Clark and Nora Owings. She's with Travel Salem, and Adri is the tourist arm of, of the chamber, and also somebody from the university. We also had two community members. We also had two community members, David Chastain and Della Perry, who are trying to create a community event website. I don't know how they're doing on that. We gave them lots of information, but I've got to get in touch with her and see, see what's happening there. I think that's, I think that's it. Oh, and then the letters, the letters, okay. So our, our deal was to go around and hit all the restaurants and say, "You know what? We're going to do this one year and see how it turns out." Every graduation, we have parents saying, "Where can I go, you know, for a party of 12, for a nice lunch after graduation ceremony?" And our thing was, the university will put it on their commencement website, starting May 1st, if the restaurant was willing to take reservations, they had to fill out the backside of that letter, submit it to Emily McNulty, who's with MBA, and she'll send it on to the university, who will put it on the website. So that was awesome. Is there questions?
Susan, do you have a date for the Making Spirits Bright?
Yeah.
If I knew the date for the tree lighting, I could figure it out, but I don't know that either.
It's like the 10th or something, hang on just a second, I'm sorry. December, it is not the last day of November.
The 7th, I think they're saying, yes.
7th, yes, the tree lighting's the 6th, and the 7th, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think, I'm really trying to think of a great way to advertise the Academic Excellence Showcase. I'm trying to think of how we can get more information out about that to the community, because what that really is, is literally, it is student presentations from every discipline, every department, it's research they've worked on, but it's performances, and it is student-led ways to show their work. And there's, it's so varied, there's so much going on, but I think it would really be of interest to the community, it's a daytime event.
Yeah.
But.
They're, they are earmarking some advertising dollars to go towards it. So it'll probably be in the IO for sure, but hope, of course, the Journal, Statesman, I would think.
I guess may, maybe we'll try to get that in the newsletter or something, the website, because they do list all of the different things going on.
And, and it's so much, they don't, they probably won't print out, they don't know till the last minute who's, who's presenting.
Presenting.
Presenting, and, yeah.
But it's a great event.
It's a super event, and, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we do Bike Ped. Our Bike Ped Committee?
We don't have anybody here.
We don't. Look at that.
Maybe some of those people could talk about.
Yeah, I thought some of those folks would. All right.
I could do a couple of quick notes if you wanted, just to fill it in.
We, we gave them work to do, so we know they've been working.
Yeah, so key things, what the group's done though continues, we've done a couple of good public education events, actually participated in 4th of July, that was back when the temporary blip of spin bikes was in effect, and we were explaining that. Also did a kind of a little bike rodeo, bike safety at one of the Music in the Park events, they'd like to do similar this year coming up. Otherwise, they took a crack at the transportation priorities and gave some good direction on that. We needed to pick, you know, a sidewalk project or something, they really wanted sharrows, but we knew that was going to, just going to be a process to get through with ODOT, so we focused on the Clay Street sidewalks that are moving forward. And then otherwise, you know, they've been down a little bit, so they've, they're kind of being conservative with how they approach things with having limited members.
Okay.
They also recently helped with the Independence, like Outreach Event that happened just last month, and so their, our commission was there as well, which I was happy to see.
Yeah. That's great. All right.
Gathering Spaces.
And, and we have them, so, oh, good. I thought we also had heard their work was done, so thank you, Andy, for being here this evening to represent Gathering Spaces.
Getting used to being the last person.
Oh.
Our group is called Gathering Spaces. Apparently during the initial work of the Monmouth Engaged, people wanted to know where they could meet, where groups could meet, and they needed a list of places like that. And so we started with two people who volunteered for the committee, but the city recruited three additional people, of which I was one. And we put together a list, generally with Western Oregon, the places at Western Oregon. The chamber had a nice complete list that we added to it, and then the cities provided lists of their facilities. We added other places around the county, and added churches. So we completed the list, it is on the city website under Things to See and Do, and you can pull up the list, and there's about 50 places you can look at. Obviously, the majority of them are, are Western, the cities and school districts and that kind of places, but we have some others, and we added churches to it, too. So it's complete, and it's been done for a while. We have, we have upgraded it occasionally, so I don't know what we're going to do going forward, because it's pretty much, pretty much complete. The site is not, Phyllis checked, and the site has not hit a lot, it's not one of the most popular links on the city website. If I didn't look at it, I'm not sure it would have any hits at all. But anyway, the job is complete, and it's a nice list, and people can find places to meet fairly easy, and each of those, each of the list contains where the place is, what kind of facilities they are, what kind of services they offer, and if there are any costs involved, and places for people to contact. So it's done. Thank you.
And I think the chamber uses it as a resource, because she gets a lot of questions about that kind of thing, so I know.
We did, we, they have, we were going to put it on the chamber's side, I'm not sure it ever ended up there, the list.
I, I think she just has a link to it, or she refers people, but she has all the information, too, to give folks, but I know it is a question that is asked, so, great to have.
If you want to meet someplace, you can go there and look.
Find a place to meet.
I think we have places for groups of two or more, so.
I, I know it's a question that comes up probably twice a month, someone on the, on the Monmouth Independence Facebook chat group will ask, "I want to have a birthday party, I want to have a function, where can I meet?" And somebody within three or four responses will always say, "Here, go to this list, this is what it's for." And so it is used.
And we, and we have offered various businesses the opportunity to be on the list, but they have to fill out a form, and they have to decide what, if they want to do that or not. So we tend to, well, at least I, by the way, there are just two of us left on the committee, and only because we haven't figured out how to resign.
That's good, we won't tell you.
But we do, I do, I kind of take it on my own, because I'm retired, I, I do take an opportunity to approach new businesses and say, "Do you want to be on the list?" And give them an opportunity to do so, so.
You can't resign, because you keep coming to meetings, sorry.
Well, I said, I have nothing else to do, so.
That is the saddest report I've ever heard.
But thank you, well done, well done.
We appreciate it, Ren, thank you.
So if you'll all go to the city's website and click on that at least three times this next week, it'll look really good. Thank you.
Thanks, we need to appreciate your work, so we will ask people to do that. All right, thanks, that's great. I mean, it's nice to hear folks are done, and other folks have more work to do, and keeping, keeping those active, so. At this time then, we will entertain citizen comments, and we do have Tom Wade here, if you'd come up and introduce yourself, and it looked like you had an item not currently on our agenda this evening that you wanted to visit with us about. So three minutes, and, do you want to get that microphone, so that we get that better on tape?
My name's Tom Wade, and 150 Woinaker. My purpose in being here tonight is because I came to make some comments on the sidewalk issue. I kind of made this commitment to myself, really, and I didn't realize the Blazers would be planned tonight.
Oh.
So I'll make this as quick as I can, and get, I wonder what the score is, I don't know. Being my wife, my wife and I moved here just a couple of years ago, so we're pretty new residents. And moved here, we moved from a small town in Eastern Oregon, Willow County, and we're looking for a, a community like this, which seemed to welcome people, and we felt really good about it. Had our grandkids come, and now it's, they come to Grandma and Grandpa's house, and then walk on the sidewalks, the issue I'm going to talk about, to the park, and then, of course, ice cream. And it's a ritual now, right across the ice cream, so. It just seems to me that, I learned about this first in the newspaper, I guess it was, and then some letters to the editor, maybe, about the fact that homeowners, this was new to me, I didn't, who knew, that homeowners were responsible for sidewalks in their front yard? That, I mean, it seems like, it just seems like we all benefit from sidewalks, it's a public good, it's a public thoroughfare. It seems, it seems to be public, except when it comes time for repairs. We're certainly not responsible for the potholes in the street. Actually, my house doesn't have any sidewalks. That doesn't mean I don't benefit from the sidewalks in the city. And this is an issue, it seems, I mean, to me, and this may not be true, because I certainly don't make it to all the meetings or anything, but it seems to be kicked down the road. Little lack of communication, I have a difficult time finding what's going on with the issue. I've heard there's some sidewalk inventory, but that's ongoing for some time. And it may seem like a minor issue when we consider stormwater, high, you know, 99. In one of the meetings I watched, it was either from a counselor or from one of the city officials, he said, "It's really a value issue in how we're going to chop up this money," and I agree with that completely. I also see it as an opportunity for community involvement. Corfalis, Seattle, they've found a way to fund sidewalks, didn't continue to do it as, you know, it's been done before. So let's open up those channels of communication. I know many of you, and I voted for many of you, because you wanted to open up those, those communications, get people active. There's no reason we can't do something about this. Whereas many, I mean, many, you know, fund it through homeowners, but many don't, and Seattle and Corfalis are a couple of them. So, you know, I'll just, I'll close now, because I know the game's, it's got to be going on. But it just seems ironic to me that the city council expects, apparently, burdens to that effect, homeowners, taxpayers, to pay for the repair of their own sidewalks. We certainly don't expect everyone to put their own stormwater retention system in. That's a benefit, if, if it proves to be a benefit, and it proves to get okay. One hand, say, "We want you to pay for your sidewalks, but we're going to tax you," which is tax, not a fee, "we're going to tax you for stormwater." Let's just do both of them, if they're both a benefit. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for waiting through the entire presentations to speak with us, so.
Thank you for your commitment. I'll be listening.
Here, here, thank you.
Thank you for being here, Tom.
All right, we have another comment that will come under our business agenda, because it is in reference to something that is on our agenda, so I will, we'll get started with our first item, which is our City Hall design options.
And one option, it'll take us a couple minutes to transition, did you want to take a five-minute break, you've been going for a bit? Or if you just want to wait a couple minutes, we'll get set up.
We'll take a couple minutes, we're going to take, we're going to take five minutes, so we'll be back at 23, 8:23.
This morning, so I'm very excited about that.
Everybody's doing good?
I think, Chris, what I was going to mention to you, or we can talk about later, but there's going to be some angry men.
I do, I do just want to make one comment, and I know we, we said in our public comments that if we do have information to share about public comments, I do want to mention that, in fact, the inventory, which we had all waited for, we asked for that information, the inventory has been completed by our Public Works Department. They are now costing everything, and so we, the, as a council, had asked for information to be able to make better decisions, that information would be available to us. We don't have a city council meeting, the first meeting in May, correct? We have a budget meeting only. So our second May meeting will be a regular council meeting, that will be on the agenda.
We hope.
I just, I just told Mr. Cooper I'd really like it to be on the agenda.
Unfortunately, I mentioned that when we were trying to get the data to kind of crunch, it was doing things that weren't helpful.
Yeah, and, and we had a little flooding and extra things to take care of that got us off track, but our goal is to have that item on our agenda for discussion, we, so we can look at the scope of the problem, so then we could make better decisions about how to fund that if we choose to, so. But still, before our budgets finalize, so if we chose to address it there, we could, so, thank you. Now, City Hall, look at, there it is, not.
That's our park, that's our City Hall, you can't fool me.
That's pretty, I like that. All right, so if you'll introduce our guests.
Yeah, so the main project here is looking at our City Hall facility, and so remember that involves the City Hall and then this structure right here. So original scope of work was looking at remodel options and new options, and then that could have been either keeping these as standalone structures or integrating them. And so as we started working through process, looking, I'll get a little bit to the punchline of where we're going here, is that trying to do anything with that City Hall building would be as or more expensive than building new, and you wouldn't get it exactly the way you wanted. A couple of big drivers of that are the water in the basement, that would require a complete excavation of everything, ceiling would be amazing. The type of construction on the building is one of the worst to try to do seismic upgrades on, and so at this point, they're going to go through some more details on those points, but we would like direction to possibly narrow the project and essentially only new option on City Hall. So then your two options at this point going forward would be an integrated building, wipe this one out, integrate everything into the structure there, or new City Hall, remodeled volunteer hall. So we narrowed it down to two options, and so our consulting firm, FFA, will give you some more details on how we got to that conclusion.
All right. Thank you.
Future Farmers of America.
Is this on now? Okay. Thank you all for having us here today. I'm Christine Romy, I'm the project manager for this project with FFA, and this is Kalen Berry. Kalen, Kalen is our project architect.
And Troy Ainsworth here is our principal in charge of the whole firm. So we're just going to give you a brief overview of how we came to this point, and so Kalen's going to walk you through sort of what we've gone through with the city staff, and, and then I will talk about the estimates that we had done.
Okay, so I guess I'll, let me turn this. So we started this process in December, we first sent out questionnaires to all the different city departments, just to get an idea of how they operate, what kind of things they're working on. At our kickoff meeting in January, we interviewed and went over those different surveys to talk with the different departments, figure out how they work, what kind of space needs they have, which departments need to be near each other, that sort of thing, and to get the lay of the land of the existing buildings and what's going on with them there. So we came up with a final, like, ideal square footage diagram and adjacency diagram of if you lived in an ideal world, how much space would you have for your department, and who would be next to who to make things run more efficiently, and that's what's represented here. So we have, in the green color, anything court or council function related, in blue, anything that finance, building, planning, admin, City Hall functions, and anything in that kind of darker green or teal color, that's like shared functions, like a shared lobby or... that's like shared functions, like a shared lobby or shared break room, these sorts of things. And in gray, any service areas like storage or mechanical rooms and restrooms and such. So with that, we compared to what you have. The ideal square footage would be about 50% greater than what is currently allotted between the two buildings, volunteer hall and city hall now. And that even includes the kind of underutilized spaces in this building that were formerly used by the police. So if those were to be brought into the fold and used, this is the comparison of square footages between the two of what you have.
Can I just jump in here? Do you have handouts for us? Because I can't see a thing up there. It's just a blur to me.
Well, we didn't bring any handouts with us, but we can certainly send them through Scott tomorrow so that he can provide them to you.
Okay, thank you.
So what you're seeing here is just a smaller version of that adjacency diagram and the existing floor plans of the building. So this is just to show roughly what you have on each floor of the existing buildings. And like Scott mentioned, we were tasked with exploring four different design options. I'll go into them in greater detail and in much bigger pictures than this after, but just to give you an overview, the first option is simply expanding and/or remodeling both buildings, leaving them where they are. Option two was to expand and remodel the existing city hall and add in an addition that would encompass the council and court functions. Option three was a new city hall and leaving the volunteer hall as a remodel only. And then the last option is combining both of them into a brand-new building. So we'll kind of go over the different options now. So this is option one. And this is expanding and remodeling both volunteer hall and city hall. It leads to a kind of awkward site layout that you are already kind of experiencing as far as parking goes, kind of inefficiency of parking, kind of hodgepodge parking items together. But just to give you an idea, the main entrance for the city hall would still be off of the main street here. There'll be a secondary kind of main entrance off the parking area. And a proposal to add a bit of a lobby to this building, expanding out that direction so that you're not having to walk straight into council if you're arriving late, or if you have a recess where you need people to leave, there's a spot indoors for them to wait. So that's kind of the general site layout. And then in this option, basically, everybody's functions would remain in the same place other than the possibility of the court clerk being located here. But, so that's that option. Option two is expanding and renovating the existing city hall, demolishing volunteer hall and adding the court and council functions into the site adjacent to this, the city hall. So this one, you're able to get a little bit more organized parking area. You're able to avoid walking in the rain between the two buildings, but still having to deal with the issues of renovating the existing city hall and the challenges that come with that. Here's kind of a breakdown where there'd be like a shared lobby between the two functions that, so that gets you some efficiency of spaces and having the courts kind of on one side and the finance, admin, planning and building on the other side. Option three is a brand-new city hall, where it is existing and expanding, and then just renovating volunteer hall. So not much would change for this building, except for maybe adding on a little bit and encompassing some of those underused spaces. But we'd be able to really create a more efficient layout for all the functions that are currently being held in the city hall. And then option four is everything brand-new altogether. And this does lead to the, kind of the most efficient site layout, of course, because we're able to put everything exactly where we want it, create a good street front here, and, or you're able to get a lot more parking for both functions in this option. And again, this has a similar layout to the expanded options, where we try and put all of the court functions on one side and the finance, admin, building and planning on the other side, and give them kind of shared amenities between the two so that you're able to not double up on bathrooms and break rooms and all, all that sort of thing. And that's going to be real hard to read.
We'll just talk to the, the basics of what we were trying to accomplish here.
So, so we had gone through our first kickoff meeting with the city staff and came back about a month later and started to show them our concept plans for these four different options. And as we were working out those concept plans, it became clear to us and a bit concerning that the existing building options were challenged in a lot of ways. We have the seismic issues that Scott mentioned, the water issues that he mentioned. There is a bearing wall that runs basically down the middle of the building, which makes it very difficult to use the spaces efficiently. You can't really have an open office space. You can't really get the sightlines you might want in some of the spaces that might need them. And so when we presented those options and talked through them, we asked the city staff whether or not the city would consider reducing the scope of, you know, all the concepts to two, so we could focus on the new schemes that might be more beneficial to the city overall. And the recommendation that we got was, well, let's get some, some hard evidence that shows how this isn't very beneficial from a cost perspective, as well as a functional perspective for the building and for the city's use. So we created, and I want to be clear that the estimates that are represented here that you'll see in your packets tomorrow are not any of these particular schemes. We wanted to create a really meaningful comparison that was truly apples to apples. So what we did was we've taken the footprint of the building, the eight thou, or the 5,000 square foot building and its basement, and idealized how we would renovate that building within the boundaries of the walls as they are, and then building a new building with the same parameters. And what we found in this process was that renovating the existing building is more expensive and less functional than building a new one. And where that comes to be clear is in the various aspects of this estimate that you'll see, the selective demolition. So in order to renovate the existing structure, we have to be very careful about the parts and pieces that we remove and that we modify. And because we have to do that within the existing building that parts of it need to remain, it becomes really challenging to protect those pieces that need to remain, as well as remove the elements that we don't want to keep. Additionally, even though we are able to keep things like walls and floors and the foundation, they all need to be augmented for seismic purposes. So it's almost as if you're building everything from scratch to begin with. So the costs are very similar. And ultimately, we ended up a bit more on the existing construction renovation than we did on the new construction, by about $10 a square foot. So we ended up with a $2 million construction cost for the existing renovation and a $1.95 million cost for the new construction. And they're very similar, but again, you're functionally not performing as well as you might if you had the ability to put the spaces where you wanted them to go, have windows where you want them to be, get your exiting how it is most effective. So, so that's sort of how we ended up and wanted to present this to you and see if you agree that focusing on the new construction options might be the better way to go. It would allow us to spend more time on those options and then be able to dial in the costs associated with them to a degree that if we had to spread out that time amongst four, we might not be able to, to get to that level. So if you had any questions, we can certainly field them now.
I have a quick question, if I may. Does the cost of the new construction include the demolition and the disposal of the materials? In particular, if you find asbestos or something that would need to be tented?
It does, yes. Where our estimator took those, those aspects into consideration when he figured the costs for the.
So there's no asbestos in the building and no lead-based paint and any of that stuff? That, you know, you have to bring in negative air and.
Right. So he, so he assumed that there was going to have to be some level of abatement.
Okay, so this 1.9 includes all of that?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
And, and to be clear, that, you know, $5,000 square foot construction is, is, you know, the economy scale isn't there. So you're not getting some value for the size. So take, you know, when you look at these costs, it's not necessarily $336 a square foot for the $15,000, or $15,000 square foot building that you'd have. The cost for square foot's going to go down because you've got some economy of scale that helps to reduce the cost. So we can't necessarily apply these costs to any future building specifically.
Well, that, that's what I was going to ask. I just wanted to make sure I was clear. What, what you said was, since I can't see the numbers in front of me, but what you said was, this is almost like a, I don't want to say hypothetical. This is not a real dollar amount of anything we're really talking about. You're saying if we took the building as it is and renovated it, the 5,000 square feet, or if we built another 5,000 square foot building, these are the cost differentials. So we're not yet really comparing what we're talking about if we were going to renovate and build on or something else. All, all you're saying is there's four options. It's going to take X number of hours, and you only have X number of hours to work. So if we can narrow it down to two options, you can put that much more time into giving us a better quality estimate for two options versus four. Am I understanding right?
Yes, and, and we, yeah, and we just feel that those two options are the most beneficial for, for the city.
I just wanted to make sure I was.
No, you're, you're exactly right on with that.
Thank you.
Other questions? I could have told him this without all that analysis.
It's important to do the work.
It is important to do the work and show our work, which this is great. But considering that I, we first started talking about this 10 years ago, when I was on the economic development commission, and said, yeah, is this, would anybody consider our current city hall of any historic value? Does anyone have an opinion on that?
Oh, are you asking us now? I, I don't, I don't believe so. We understand that it was designed to be a fire station originally, and, and that, you know, had it remained a fire station, then maybe it could have had some value. But I think it's been pretty taken apart and pieced up until now. I think Troy's getting ready to say something over here.
Well, I can contribute a little bit. Our, our firm has done a lot of historic work over the years. And one of the things that makes a historic building valuable are what are called character-defining features. And many of the character-defining features of this building have been modified. And so from that perspective, as a historic structure, it has been pretty compromised from that perspective, in addition to all the other things we mentioned.
The swimming pool in the basement, the.
Yeah, the swimming pool in the basement, that's a problem.
Fine example of wood paneling throughout is not considered original to its construction?
Right.
Right, okay.
We like to refer to that as a spa.
And the narrow tiny stairs with the big tall rise, right, so.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Just anecdotally, what we hear about the building is, yes, by age, sure, it's historical. I don't think there's a lot of attraction to the building. I mean, people don't really say, oh, it's, sometimes there is, well, it's unique. It is unique in its style, so okay. Otherwise, it's kind of a box. And most people are like, take it down.
Yeah. I mean, we have heard over and over again, replace city hall, replace city hall. However, we have had an experience where something was removed, and we did get some, some negative feedback about that with the clock. And so I just want to be a little more cautious and make sure that we respect people's feelings and opinions about it to make sure we're not just assuming everybody feels it's an old and outdated building. That's all.
Well, I, I think that it's a great question, and we will look into, see what's on the record relative to that building, downtown and historic. It's a, it's a great point, and we should address that as part of our work.
We just want to do our due diligence and make sure we're not upsetting people that we don't know would be upset.
Counselor Carey.
Probably a good idea to go ahead and, and do that, that bit of work. It'll take you about five minutes, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of reasons, and we've had success up and down our main street to maintaining existing buildings and older buildings. And typically, you do that for historic value, and you would do that for architectural interest, perhaps even in the case of a building maybe efficient and that sort of thing. This building has none of those. So, so you provide a little shark repellent for us if you can find no, nothing on the historic record of any value. Other than that, let's just move on. I, I mean, I don't know. I'm not interested in it personally, in anything more than that. Other than, I'm on, onside with your comment.
We just want to make sure, that's all.
It's going to have to be a compelling case.
Absolutely. I would agree.
That's why I asked.
Yes.
All right. Any other comments? We actually have a motion for us to guide our staff and our site consultants here.
I move that the city hall volunteer hall project be narrowed to focus on a new combined city hall volunteer hall building and new city hall remodeled volunteer hall buildings.
I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded to narrow our options, eliminating the option of remodeling the city hall.
Did you say remodeling?
Remodeling. That is a historic preservation term, remodeling.
Well, in this case, that would be apt.
Yes, comments?
Well, just that, that, you know, the, the review, the historic review notwithstanding. I mean, we'd want to see that, but anticipating where that'll go. We should do that anyway.
So an amendment to the motion?
Are we still having, I'm sorry?
We can still comment.
Are we still discussing, can we discuss this? The pain for this would have to go to, to the voters as a bond issue? Is that right?
That's one option.
And what would be the other option or other options?
Finance it internally. We go through like potentially a bank loan, get financing, and then more than likely, we'd charge back all the departments that benefit from city hall services.
Okay, so that probably would be an option if the bond issue doesn't pass, is that right?
Or it could be your lead option. That's a discussion we'll have to have.
Okay, and if there is, if the voters do approve a bond measure to build a 1.9 new, $1.9 million new city hall.
That's not the cost. That's not the cost.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
That's not the cost.
Okay.
If you want a 5,000 square foot city hall.
If we want a, if we want a, if we want a new city hall, what's your estimate on what it would take to pay off a bond?
I can't give you that right now.
No, 20 years?
It just depends on how you structure it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, there's lots of different options you look at when you go to bonds.
You're architects, not builders.
Yeah, yeah, all we're, all we're doing is looking at, should they move forward with.
Yeah, Janet and I don't even talk about those things. We get experts for that, too, so. Byron?
So what the motion does is it whittles these four options down to two. Can you tell me which two they are?
Three and four.
So the options three and four, so option, option four is brand-new combined city hall and volunteer hall functions into one building. And then option three is a brand-new city hall and just renovation of volunteer hall.
And either way, the senior center stays as it is, correct?
Yes.
Without a deck.
Get to everything at once, I'm sorry.
So, so I, if, if the motion, if the maker of the motion would like to amend the motion for consideration of the historic aspect, I would entertain an amendment to the motion to present to the person who seconded the motion.
And, and as the maker of the motion, I would propose an amendment to this motion, moving that city hall volunteer hall project be, that that project move forward as stated with the caveat that we do not find any historical significance of the existing building. Compelling historical, yes.
There's a wiggle word if I've ever.
Thank you, and so. And Counselor Sharma, you seconded, do you accept this?
I do accept it.
The motion as amended. So the motion as amended to narrow and focus. The motion as amended. So, the motion as amended to narrow and focus in failing to have any significant historical findings. Phyllis, do you have the wording?
Do you need this wording all in one sentence, Phyllis?
Well, I added, I went back to the original motion, and then if there is no compelling evidence to the historic value of the building, is that correct?
Fabulous, thank you.
All right. All in favor of that amended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, marching orders given. Thank you very much for going to that extra work to help us, we appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And we now, we now have community development stuff. So we will call, and again, we will get printouts of those and/or link to the presentation so we can review those in more depth and make them available. Yes.
Might I ask in the future, if it's at all possible, when we have a presentation like this, it really would be nice if we could have it in our pack or at least in front of us while we're watching it, because I just, I can't see anything on that board anymore and that screen, even with my good glasses. So if that's at all possible in the future, could we please have that?
Well.
Another option, I saw a commercial there on TV, was the Grand Pad. And so it's an easy device, it's got like bigger figures on it.
The Grand? I resemble that remark.
I will note that I have perfect vision, at least to my knowledge, although I am doubting it after tonight, so.
Well, I'm a professional speaker, and I've been told time and time again, never, ever, ever do what we had happen here, which is, oh, here's small words, you can't see them, but trust me.
Well, when we livestream, we can all just bring our iPads and watch what the camera is showing everyone else.
I'm just asking nicely if we can have it in front of us, please.
Or if we get a new City Hall like Independence has, where all of that comes up on a screen in front of them, so.
I would say if we have one like City Hall, I don't want the screen in front of me, because you cannot see the councilors, you can only see their foreheads.
Right, we'll have it down.
So, thank you.
That's all the technology. Thank you very much. So, sorry, and Suzanne?
Oh, yeah, you!
Thank you. Community Development, Suzanne Duffner. And our first item this evening, I believe, is the amendment to the City Code regarding vacation rentals and street trees.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So this is an ordinance where we have a second reading before the council's consideration tonight. If you'll recall, there's been several public hearings. The Planning Commission's held a public hearing on March 6th, and the council had a public hearing on March 15th. The first reading was at last meeting in April. We had some additional discussion, so there's been quite a bit of discussion. There has not been any further changes to the ordinance as it presented to you at the previous meeting. And if you'll recall, we did separate out the short-term vacation rental, street trees on this one ordinance, and then the second one, of course, will be the accessory dwelling units. The staff recommendation is to adopt and conduct that second reading. If it's adopted this evening, it would then become effective within 30 days of passage of the ordinance tonight. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any further questions you might have about it.
And Councilor Bilt?
I just want to clarify, because there's been quite a few questions about what this means. I just want to make sure there's the differentiation because what a vacation rental is versus somebody renting out a room in their home long-term or for 90 days or permanently. There's a big difference between a vacation rental and being a landlord and renting out a room in your house long-term. I just want to make sure that differentiation is clear.
Okay, yeah, and this ordinance does not apply to those longer rental stays. It's just for stays 30 days or less is what we're, as a vacation rental.
And it doesn't, it doesn't...
That's definitional, that's...
Yes, I just want to make sure, because that's the question I keep getting, is now, what is it? And then it also does not automatically make this home a bed and breakfast if it's longer than 30 days, correct? They do need to pay the fee and do the, if it's going to, if they're going to rent longer than 30 days total in a year, they need to have the, the use, whatever it is.
The conditional use permit.
A conditional use permit, yes, they have to do that, but that's a one-time fee, correct?
For that location, for that property owner.
For that location, for that property owner. Okay, I just want to make sure, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, there is a difference between, definitional difference between bed and breakfast, where there's a food service being provided, and then just a short-term vacation rental. But they both require a conditional use permit if you're, if you're doing it for more than 30 days for the short-term vacation rental, and then just any amount of time for a bed and breakfast, so.
But a conditional use does not necessarily mean the person is serving food, which means they don't necessarily have to be inspected by the health department.
Correct.
That's correct.
Perfect, thank you.
And one other clarification, the fee, if you are going to be under the 30 days and you choose to do this, there's a one-time fee, which we will adopt then tonight as well.
Right, there's a resolution, a fee amendment.
One-time, one property, one owner.
$25, yes, for that property owner. Now, if the property's sold to a different property owner, they would need to apply for their own.
Their own $25 fee.
Otherwise, it's a one-time fee.
Right, or if they move locations, they said, oh, you know, I want to do this at my other house in Monmouth, they'd have to apply for it, correct, at that location.
Those were things I know had been asked and kind of swirling out there. So other questions, Laurel?
These, I'm sorry to say, I received some severe scoldings for not knowing the answers to some questions. And if I may, I'd like to ask you those, and then I can pass them along. One of the questions was, how will Monmouth residents benefit from this amendment to the code?
They benefit by being, having a legal path to do a vacation rental in their home. Right now, we don't have a legal path to do that in your, in your house right now. So if there's any that are occurring in residential areas, they're not legal uses by our code. So we're trying to create a legal path for somebody to build, use their home as a vacation rental. And then we're also adopting standards that will also help protect the character of the neighborhood from just turning into transient lodging without, you know, kind of the permanent residential character that people are used to in a single family or a residential neighborhood.
Okay, and then also, what was the impetus for us? Was it just for this, just to maintain the character, the quiet residential character of neighborhoods?
We actually had a code enforcement brought up for somebody that was doing one in their home. So that's what really brought it to our attention, is that, you know, we kind of knew things were happening during the eclipse, thought that might settle down. But then this was after post- eclipse, there was still interest in people using their home for vacation rentals. And there are a lot of cities that are addressing this very issue right now. So there's a lot of materials and sample codes through League of Oregon Cities. So it was, we knew it was a timely, just like food carts, these are issues that cities are kind of grappling with all over, and it was time to take a, more of a proactive rather than just pretend that it wasn't existing in our community.
Yeah, like I said, the impetus is to make it lawful, and while making it lawful, creating standards that are, that are logical and, you know, reasonable, and protect the neighborhoods around these.
So if we're looking for data to support this, it's mostly just the fact that there was a code enforcement issue?
It's not lawful, so it is not permitted right now.
Okay, so, so you can't?
Yeah, and I've done some research, it looks like there's, I think, under a dozen that are actually actively listed on Airbnb, or vacation rental by owner, home stays.
In violation of the development code.
That means there are 12.
Of the code, okay, all right. And then when you say no more than 30 days in a year, when does that year start?
So it'll...
So they pay their permit?
Yes, right, so it would be a clock that runs from when they get their vacation rental permit issued, and it's a calendar year, so.
It's a calendar year, so it's 365 days from when they get their permit. If they get their permit on June 14th, it's 365 days from there?
Yes.
Okay, so a person who's kind of sneaky about this could, could rent out their, a room in their home for 30 days at the very end, the last 30 days of their year, and then rent it out for another 30 days at the beginning of their next year, and have 60 days of rentals a year, in a 13-month period.
30 days per calendar year, that would mean between January 1st and December 1st.
Oh, you don't get to run from the instruments of the permit?
No, that's a permit year, basically. So this is a calendar year.
Calendar year, okay.
If you have, you get your permit in December, you can have 30 days until December 31st, and the clock starts over again on January 1st.
Okay, okay, not that the people who are asking these questions are scofflaws, but it would be possible to rent your place out for 60 days in 13 months.
January, December, and the year before.
And if the neighbors had issues, the neighbors could still complain. There is still, there's still recourse.
That's right, and...
There will still be complaint.
And what if there was a lot of traffic and noise and parties and all that kind of stuff? What would be the recourse if the person had paid the permit to?
What would be the recourse for the neighbor?
The neighbor who's still awake at 1:00 in the morning while the party's going on?
Right, they can call the non-emergency police number, and certainly the city can enforce on our existing noise and nuisance ordinance laws. We also, with these standards that you'd be adopting tonight, have the vacation rental owner designating a local representative that lives within, I believe it's 10 vehicular miles of the city limits. And so that is our point of contact, to get a hold of the renter, to make sure, the vacation rental renter, that, you know, that they will stop the noise. And so we'll, I talked with Councilor Carey actually earlier, he had a question about this, on how that would actually work in practice. And I envision that we, Community Development would give police a copy of that contact information as well, so that if, you know, they had a local person point of contact, they could contact them and hopefully bring them to compliance. Now, if they don't, if we get multiple violations, they're not bringing it into compliance, we can actually go through a process to revoke that vacation rental permit to stop that from happening. So, yeah, that's the recourse.
Just a couple more. How many lodging rooms are there currently in Monmouth, say, people who want to come and spend a couple weeks?
I do not know that number off the top of my head, I know we have...
Because Monmaire's has like five or six?
Yeah, right, and then College Inn, yeah.
College Inn, they have like 20 years?
I don't, I don't know, do you know?
Is that enough to account for, say, things like Parents Weekend and Homecoming?
Oh, no, of course not.
Yeah.
Have we thought about, have we thought about that, Biff? I mean, most of those things occur in the fall, so if you've used up your 30 days in the spring, you won't, wouldn't be able to rent out a room or a suite or an apartment to parents coming for events or alumni coming for events at the university? If all the rooms that in College Inn are already rented, and Monmaire's is full, there's no vacancy, and they go onto Airbnb, and there's nothing there either, have we thought about how that might have an impact?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's why we're proposing a two-track system. You can either do the 30 days if you're only going to do it for like maybe, you know, a month of a year, or you can go through the conditional use process, like a bed and breakfast would have to do, and be able to do it for a longer duration during the year. So, yeah, that's...
I think people who want to cater to those groups would be able to say, I'm only going to do it on graduation weekend and homecoming weekend, and they would pick their 30 days might be 10 week, 10 three-day weekends. They would have a lot of opportunity for those kind of events, those overflow.
And our short stay is defined as 30 days, right? So a person who rents out, say they, say they've got a master suite in their house and they rent it out, 30 days total is a short stay. If it's, say it's one, it's one renter, and they're there for 30 days, that's a short, that's considered a short stay?
But it's not a vacation rental.
Well, for 30 days, or less it is.
Yeah.
Right, the definition, short-term vacation rental.
Okay, all right. I think that's it, thank you.
And I'm going to check for council comments. We do have one public comment, and it looks like we might have another question, but I'll check for additional council comments or questions.
Just a couple. Yeah, I think we have to be careful about getting too tied up in the term vacation. These are really short-term rentals. I mean, the, in Lincoln City, Cannon Beach, Sisters, typically, those are a little more vacation-driven. We may get some of those vacation rentals here, but they're, they're as likely as not the type of people Laurel's talking about, coming down for Parents Weekend. That's not necessarily...
That's a vacation rental, sure. That's what I would use Airbnb for.
The vacation piece is distracting. It's really short-term or transient, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter. We can't get, yeah. My concern was, and I think we've got it solved now, but I like the idea of the local representative being identified. However, if it's Friday night and there's a party going on, and they have, you know, the neighbors have no way to get a hold of the representative, because as it's structured, there's no way it's there. However, so they would call the city.
The police.
Police can still enforce.
Well, if, if they get that, you see, that, that would take that local representative out of it. If they would call the police, the police could go get it, that would be fine. But the local representative really would be out of the mix, unless, when they did the, the application, that local representative's contact could be given to the police. So if they wanted to do something other than, you know, if they wanted to engage this person, they would have a means to do it. So that strengthens that, I think, if that's, if that, that would be the procedure, so.
Right, and the fact that we can still, I mean, we'll find out on Monday morning, there was a complaint, this is how it was dealt with, and so it's kind of one strike against you, right? And then you're starting to keep getting multiple occurrences of that then. Like I said, we had to process to revoke it.
There's two levels on that. One is, is the one you're talking about, you know, the strike one, and after a while, we're just going to revoke your deal. The other's dealing with it instantly, you know, that, that problem right now. And I, I think if, if, certainly the police could do that, but if, if there was an advantage to having the local representative, I think that would be, that's a good, that strengthens it considerably, I think.
Yes, I swear to love it.
I've, I've struggled with, with, with some matters regarding pretty much everything with this, from the, the cost to the 30-day limit to, you know, whether this is, you know, tough on homeowners that could have home businesses, and, and, and the other, the other, you know, infrastructure issues with perhaps having a lot of these, you know, should we, should we go down a road that doesn't have those limits? In doing that research with it, came to my attention that the single largest, the single largest real estate landowner in the country is a hedge fund. That hedge fund owns $5.5 billion worth of residential real estate in the U.S. And a lot of this is being used for, and this is not, I will say, this is not the National Enquirer I got these numbers from. This is Bloomberg, Wall Street Journal, and Business Insider. And these, these rentals are being used more and more often as opposed to, and these properties are being used very often as rental properties, more and more often as short-term rental properties. And so there, there are some that say, you know, perhaps we should just, just allow this so that all of our neighbors and all of the Woming people can be, you know, rent their rooms out. I am concerned about, about that, and I do think, I guess what I'm getting at, is that this is well-crafted to be able to protect our homeowners from larger business interests, to still give a legal way for us to be able to move forward, for people to be able to rent out apartments, rent out extra rooms, without opening ourselves up as a city to, to issues of outside investment and putting further undue burden on our already scarce residential, residential zoning areas. And so just, just wanted to bring that information to you. It's stuff that I, I've looked into over the past couple of weeks, and I appreciate the diligence and the effort that's gone into crafting this.
And a lot of the buy-up of this property is trailer parks.
Trailer parks, but everything from trailer parks to buying entire, you know, multi-story high-rise apartment buildings to single-family dwellings. So it is a concern, and I, you know, as much as I, you know, might question some of these things as far as, oh, 30 days, is that the right number, concerns about some of the costs involved, et cetera, et cetera. I appreciate the, the work that's gone into it, and I, I find it, I find it well, well put together.
I think that's, kudos to the Planning Commission. They did a lot of work sessions and research on looking at a lot of different examples and talked about it at quite a few meetings, so, yeah, thank you, I'll pass that along.
Yeah, I think this really is that mitigating your concern, because I have friends in Portland whose neighborhood has turned... because I have friends in Portland whose neighborhood has turned into, on their street, almost every other house now is for rent, Airbnb, because it's a desirable, walkable part of Portland.
And the homes are so expensive, single families can hardly afford them, but corporations can.
Yep, so my, my friend and her lovely craftsman are surrounded by short-term vacation rentals. So I, I do think this is a, an opportunity to have more control over a situation that could happen, so.
However, vacation, or any kind of rental, I mean, it's not necessarily a bad thing. I mean, we want to make sure that that's, that's clear, too. I mean, I've, I've rented out homes, I've been a renter, I've lived in neighborhoods where everything is rent. Rentals are not in and of themselves bad.
These are literally vacation rentals.
I realize, that's what I'm saying.
Every house on the street is listed all the time.
It's, it's just a balancing act, and it's not necessarily a bad thing, that's all.
All right, we have, we do have a public comment request, Michelle Chang. If he'll let us know that you're a resident and wanted to talk to us about short-term rental, we'll hear your comments.
Thank you. Really appreciate the conversation that is happening up here. My name is Michelle Chang. I am at 1220 Gwynne Street here in Monmouth, representing my multi-generational housing, or household, I should say. I was very happy to see that there is this move towards formalizing short-term rental policies, making a legal path, having logical standards. I love the conversation that I'm hearing. I would just like to share and offer a few more thoughts about how these regulations can maximize the benefit that short-term rentals can have in our community. I have heard and I agree with the concerns about short-term rentals. My husband and I have visited places like Barcelona and Lisbon where locals can no longer afford to live in their old neighborhoods and are very weary of inconsiderate tourists. A short-term rental limit of 30 days per year, I think, makes sense in these places. In our case, I think the real concern is the quality of our neighborhoods, but the policy proposed, I don't think, is the best way to meet that. Instead, I think the 30-night limit and the conditional use permit restricts the benefits to community members. Our brother and sister-in-law in Portland rented their basement apartment in their house to short-term guests, and it gave them a much-needed cushion when they were both between jobs at different times. That was more than 30-day period. I also found that 65% of hosts in Portland say they use short-term rental income to help afford staying in their homes. And so that means that they are actually living in the homes where they are renting. Hosts are not the only ones who see the economic benefits. A Portland study found that the average short-term rental guest stays 30% longer and spends 20% more than a hotel guest. For every $100 a traveler spent on lodging, they spent an additional 69 on food, $24 on local transportation, $48 on arts, entertainment, and recreation activities, and 59 on retail shopping. So I do think this is something that's worth encouraging, obviously to a limit and to a good standard. So I believe Monmouth can benefit from more short-term rentals and mitigate the negative impacts through a policy that encourages rentals on properties where the owner resides. So having hosts be onsite with their renters is the best way to preserve quiet residential atmosphere that we all want. We're not going to let a huge party go on in our own home when we're living there, or even in the apartment that's on our property. So I think it makes sense to have a 30-day-per-year restriction on renting out an entire home, but I don't think it's in our community's best interest to make it more difficult for residents who want to rent out a room in their house or an ADU on their own property. Alternatively, if the goal is to keep that fraction of short-term rentals in our area contained, to limit the number of houses that are rented out, rather than restricting an individual homeowner, perhaps it would be more appropriate to put a cap on total short-term rental permits within a given mileage radius, and this is happening in Bend, Oregon. So just in conclusion, as it stands now, I think the proposed policy is on the right track, but for homeowners, I think it's a little bit too restrictive in terms of the 30-day limit and the conditional use process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if we have another brief comment, we'll take that one quickly. If you want to come up to the table, sir? Peyton? Yeah.
I have a question I can just propose.
You need to hit the microphone so that we can get that on, on tape, Peyton. If you can just state your name and where you live.
My name is Peyton Llewellyn, I've lived in Monmouth since 1970. I currently reside at 262 Monmouth Avenue South. My only question is, I'm a bit confused about on this sheet here, registration of short-term vacation rental dwellings, $25. And it was, I, I can't remember which councillor mentioned about the 60 days in a 13-month period, but if this is a, a one-time-only fee, and I, I find that these fees, it would have been real simple just to put "one-time-only" because in a registration of short-term vacation rental dwellings, I assumed that was annually. Evidently, I was mistaken, but things like appraisal fee, or appeal fees, so forth, I assumed that that was a one-time for that individual action. So as I say, I'm a bit confused about the comment of 60 days in a 13-month period when this is supposedly a one-time fee.
Though, they're divorced from each other, right? So the, the only difference, if a 60-day happens over the course of a calendar year, that person, in order to be compliant, would have to apply for the conditional use variance. They would no longer qualify under the 30-day fee and the $25.
I see, okay.
And I think on that list of fees, everything is kind of considered to be one-time unless it's listed as, at a different rate, per year, per hour, renewal, something like that.
The only thing that, that I was probably confused about was the fact that when you have the 30-day period and the short-term vacation or short-term rental, it would seem to be agreeable for an annual fee to continue the, the action.
I see, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Chris?
Regarding, regarding an owner occup, an owner occupancy, I guess, consideration, was, was that considered by Planning Commission, or was that discussed?
Yeah, we did, actually Astoria was one of the examples that we looked at that was like that, and we thought also for similar reasons that that was too restrictive, that there are some people that like to go to vacation rentals where they rent out the whole house and have a little more privacy. So we were trying to meet those needs as well. So that there, but there absolutely are examples of communities, I would say, less so, the fewer of the communities limit it to just, what do they call those, roaming in or stay where you have the owner, stay there, and it's a room within the house rather than entire, the entire house. But, but yeah, there are a few communities that have restricted it down to.
And it was considered by the Planning Commission?
It was considered, yeah, as one of the options.
Or, and, and I guess, you know, for lack of a better, for lack of a better term, were there any owner occupancy loopholes considered as far as how that would be, you know, advantageous to the city and to our residents, considered in the rate schedule or some of the restrictions? A loosening of restrictions for owner-occupied rentals as opposed to, as opposed to ones that are strictly being used for investment purposes?
We did not parse it down into that level. I mean, some of it's administering, trying to get an ordinance that's, you know, manageable to be able to administer as well as, you know, as, as part of that concern.
I do understand the administration concerns. However, I have heard in these chambers multiple times that these are being dealt with on a complaint basis or hypothetically would be dealt with on a complaint basis, so it would just ease the, ease the burden on residents that are, are living in the home yet at the same time still provide an avenue for, for those complaints to be registered.
Yeah, I guess it'd just be hard to know, are they really staying onsite or leaving? You know, we'd be up on their honor kind of situation, so it could be difficult.
Byron?
Well, that was, that was my question. I think that's, if I'm wrong, I think that's what Michelle was asking, is, is sort of two paths, two different requirements, one set of requirements for owner-occupied and then one set of requirements for just, you know, purely investment, you know, I rent out the whole, the whole house. And so what I, what I hear is that, that, that wasn't really considered, you know, allowing both, but having different rules for the two different situations.
Clear system of some kind, yeah.
Right.
John?
Well, it's, it's like there was, under the definition, short-term vacation rentals means a dwelling unit or part of a dwelling unit that is rented, and, and that would suggest, that would at least open the opportunity for that owner-occupied there if you're going to rent that off. However, then you get down into the permitted uses on each of them, and it, it only speaks to a dwelling. It doesn't speak to the part of a dwelling unit. And I, I just wonder if that's, if that doesn't eliminate that.
No, it doesn't, because each one of those uses the defined term "short-term vacation rental", which itself includes the part of a dwelling. You go back, each one of them uses.
Yeah, it, it.
Yeah, no, it, it works.
The definition is confusing because on the one hand, it's, it's, and, and I'm okay, and you're the, you're the final arbiter on that, but that was one of the things that, that sort of stuck to me is that might have been an avenue, at least open that up. And then as you go down into that, it, I was concerned that it might be closing it, and if it's not, then.
Because it, it's using a defined term that includes the whole dwelling or a part of the dwelling.
Roxanne?
I mean, perhaps at a future date, we could consider, I almost want to say like a third tier, where if there's a guarantee, or some sort of assured owner-occupied, that then they may be able to have more than 30 days without having to then go for the full conditional use, which has a whole other level. I mean, maybe there's a third level there, because if the concern about the owner not being there, then that may cause problems. Maybe if we know the owner will be there, as, as she said, they're not going to have crazy parties if the owner's living right there. So I mean, maybe it's just something we could consider in the future. If enough people say, "Hey, I'd really like to be able to do this," can't there be something in between this and this?
Kind of judged by the popularity. I mean, we'll say there are other, judged by the, the frequency or the amount of permits and what types of permits are we getting. Absolutely, we can monitor and provide feedback on that. I would say, though, that while certainly parting and loud noise are part of the concerns, the conditional use actually would look at other items as well, like parking and landscaping, you know, those sorts of things, so.
I just know for some people, they've been concerned about the cost of that being rather prohibitive, you know, the entry, entry cost per se of $700, so, for the conditional use, so.
This is ordinance 1386. If someone is interested in making a motion, whether adopting the ordinance as presented or some variation thereof, we have many options here.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Is, is it possible to make a motion to refer this, refer this back for, for reconsideration of some of these other concerns that were brought up? I, I know that this is something that has been talked about at length at each reading, and, and I know that it does put it down the road a little bit, but is that an option?
I believe so.
It, it would be a matter of referring it back to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, with, with clear direction on what, what's being asked to be reviewed.
Yep, go back to planning, they'd have another hearing, come back to us for legislative.
Yep, you do this again.
Direction, and come back for a first reading and then a second reading.
I, I think everybody's made some really good points here tonight.
I need a motion one way or the other, so.
Right now?
Yep, we'll take a motion, and then if someone seconds it, then we'll discuss.
Can I just make one, just one last comment in regards to this? I, what I, some of you have talked about the cost, and that is the big concern for me for the conditional use permit. If you pay $600 for this, that clearly is to pay for the cost of bringing it, a hearing before the Planning Commission and all of that. However, you'd have to also invite all the people who live within 250 feet of your house, and if your neighbor's got a grudge about you, or your neighbor doesn't like the way you look, or they're, they think, you know, several people say, "Well, I know they're going to bring in undesirables here," you don't get your $600 back, and that's a concern to me, too. So I just wanted to point that out.
I'll accept a motion. And again, if you choose to go with the ordinance as written, it's 1386.
I, I hate to be a monkey, or throw a monkey wrench in all the work that's been done here, but I think some.
I just need a motion.
Some really good points were brought up, so I move that we refer this back to Planning Commission to explore the, sort of the two-tier thing, owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied units, and explore different parameters for declaring, for the needs of a conditional use permit, I guess.
Second.
Did you get all that, Phyllis?
No. Can you make a motion a little simpler to discuss everything? It's been moved and seconded to refer the ordinance, Amending Monmouth City Code Regarding Vacation Rentals and Street Trees, back to Planning with some further guidance. And all in favor?
What do we do about the fact that we have two amendments linked together about the trees and?
They'll, they'll both go back at this point.
They'll both go back.
They'll both go back.
I gotta say, I think they're constitutional issues. If you're going to charge residents, owner, people who live in Monmouth a different rate than you're going to charge people who live outside of Monmouth, if it's not owner-occupied. I, we sure want to look at that, that, that's, we generally don't do that for something like this. I'm not saying you can't do it, but I, I'd want to look at that very carefully. That's the problem with kind of.
And, and for clarity, as I understand, it is not residence versus non-residence, it is, it is owner-occupied versus non-owner-occupied.
We'll look at it.
I could throw something out. With some of these procedures, this is, this is a, a lot of information. We're not too sure what to convey back to the Planning Commission. Another option would be that you table this, and then you take this up as a work session.
A work session, figure out what we like.
And then that would give us a better chance to, potentially, if we get some concerns laid, then you could go ahead and move forward with this rather than start in the whole track and then end up in the same place. So if you could actually, actually continue this to a further meeting, I wouldn't go date certain, because we need to have a work session first to clarify, sort through some things, and then if you decide at that point to refer it back to Planning Commission, then we could do that.
Madam Mayor, I believe the Chair of our Planning Commission would like to say something, or will you entertain a comment from him?
If you want, you have some ideas, Stephen, thanks.
Thank you for taking all of this time on this subject, and it's true, we have spent a long time on it. However, I feel like, having heard this and this conversation on Facebook, I have some sense of what's desired here. If you're worried about the Planning Commission feeling directed, well, I've been listening to all this for a couple of weeks now. I think we can do something productive with it, however, if you still want to have a work session, that's obviously a prerogative. But if you want to send it back to Commission, Suzanne's been here, I've been here, we can probably give you something useful whenever it's ready, so.
So we have two options. One is to withdraw the motion to refer to Planning Committee. The other is to go ahead and vote on that motion. Would you like to withdraw your motion?
Having heard Stephen's comments, I don't think so. I think we proceed, and if he feels, if the Commission feels guided sufficiently, I think.
Then he can stand on his.
They can come back.
And then, there were two seconds, so the sec.
I will allow.
Yield the second, do you?
Yield it to, to Councilor Lopez.
Do you affirm your second to keep the motion going as is?
I affirm my second.
Thank you.
To keep.
The motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor.
Thank you. Any further comments on the motion? I will entertain a vote, all in. All in favor of the motion to refer this back to Planning Commission, who feels sufficiently guided and directed, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. And yes, so street trees will have to wait, go out and plant those ashes now while it's still legal.
No, don't plant them.
Well, we can't stop them. Okay, we now have another one, and I'm sorry, I just want to mention, we typically, again, try to sort of stop at nine and take the temperature. We were warned we would be here late tonight, so we will continue. Again, we do not have a meeting the first Tuesday in May, we have a Budget Committee meeting, so we really need to get through these items, including an upcoming executive session. So, we'll move on to our accessory dwelling units.
Okay, so this was the other part of Legislative Amendment 19-01. Again, there's been public hearings held in March, both before the Planning Commission and the Council, discussion at first reading at the last April meeting. This is the same place as the vacation rentals, as a second reading. If you adopt it this evening, it will become effective in 30 days. Staff recommendation is to approve the only section of the accessory dwelling unit standards that's proposed for amendment with this ordinance is the owner occupancy requirement. All of the rest of the standards would stay the same as is currently written in our code. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any further questions you might have.
Sorry to be dense here, but what's the rationale for not requiring the owner of the property to be there?
The rationale is that the State Department of Land Conservation Development, D L C D, has provided guidance on accessory dwelling unit standards, recommending that that particular language be taken out of city codes, because it's not considered a reasonable standard. So, that is why we have looked at updating it and making it more consistent with the state guidelines. But it's not a shall, it's a guideline, so that's where we're at today.
But you don't know why, I mean...
Why, I'm sorry.
The rationale, I think, is to encourage, the state policy is they want people to use these.
Right, we don't want barriers to...
That's right.
An affordable housing type.
And to impose an owner occupied requirement limits the people who can use, who can use these on their property.
So, say somebody owns a house with an accessory dwelling unit next to it, they can rent out the bigger house, and then also rent out the A D U, and provide housing for a couple of families instead of just one.
Because again, the state policy is to increase the housing stock.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that is the state policy behind this.
Okay. Thank you.
Alternative to that policy would be to loosen up the urban growth boundary expansion process. That would be an alternative, that would be my suggestion.
Other comments?
There are legislative changes that are the impetus to this, or is this...
Yeah, the legislative change is to disapprove unreasonable barriers to the use of A D Us as dwelling units, and the interpretation of the Department of Land Conservation Development in developing the model code was that to impose an owner occupied requirement constitutes an unreasonable burden. So, that's an interpretation by the agency of the legislative mandate not to impose unreasonable burdens.
They could come up with a whole bunch more as these things become possible, and we might be faced with this again, but again, it's a guidance, but, and we could be a test case, we could say, no, we're not going to remove that requirement, and then we'd be faced with, potentially, if somebody wants to challenge that as an unreasonable requirement, we'd be a test case. But we have a good attorney if we had to go to D L C Ds.
That's right.
Just have to say.
Knows his way around.
He knows his way around that department.
Oh, they don't show respect to nobody.
Yeah, one of the, I think realistically, what we're, you know, we may, there may be some, and there would no doubt be some people that live on site, and then they either construct or modify a accessory building and rent that out. I'm going to guess, though, that there'll be a fair few that are in a position where they could, and they're, whether they live in Monmouth, or whether they live in Independence, or anywhere else, if they could slap up a 400-foot unit and rent that, they're going to do that. And that will change, potentially, the character of, because this is not 30 days, this is long-term. And that potentially could change the character of neighborhoods. And so, I'm, however, given their interest in expanding the housing stock, you know, and that's fine, I would be more comfortable to suggest language similar to the vacation rental with a local representative, which could be a, you know, somebody that lives within 10 miles, or a property management company that could keep an eye on this, that could manage it rather than some absentee owner. And I also wonder a little bit about the, on the back page of the staff report, it talks about accessory dwelling units shall be located only in the same building as the principal residence unless the lot is of a certain size, 8,500 square feet in area, which suggests a large lot. Okay, fair enough. Unless, or unless, the accessory dwelling unit will replace a detached existing structure, which is not defined as near as I can tell, at least 400 square feet. So, that could be a woodshed, that could be a garage, detached garage, on a small lot that was grandfathered in from previous, prior to L C D's concern. And now, there is your, there's a way to add another dwelling, something that people would live in on a small lot. That's a little troubling to me, because I think we could begin to wedge things in. So, I'm not, I'm just not quite sure, that's just making me uncomfortable. I'm not church...
It's existing language, right? That has nothing to do with this amendment we're considering tonight.
Existing language, but...
That's our existing language.
But, yeah, it is, and that's a good point. But, as you condense things, but people in smaller are like molecules, you know, you get them closer together, they begin to act a little more randomly.
But we can't change that now.
So, anyway, just, that's my comment. I would prefer to have a little more local oversight of that.
So, I'm just curious of the concern, we have lots of absentee landlords now, so the difference between having an absentee landlord of a six-bedroom house who rents that out, or I guess you can't have more than five unrelated people living together, so you have a five-bedroom home and you're renting it out, or you have a two-bedroom home with an accessory dwelling unit attached to it, how could we impose a requirement to have a property manager in one instance, but we're not requiring you have a property manager in the other?
Well, because you'd have two rental contracts, would be one of the ways to look at it. If you have challenging renters, and again, I think the reality is, we live in a college town, you know, if we have problems with that, if we do, and if this were to go without any local connection, we run the risk of exacerbating that, and at the expense of the neighborhood.
How long have we had the A D U provisions? It was...
I don't have a date on that in my code.
Yeah, how often do we get?
Oh, not very often. I mean, we're getting a little more interest now, but, yeah, I'd guess less than five probably permits a year, so far, building permits, but I don't have an exact number on that.
So, removing the requirement for owner occupancy may increase that a little bit.
Maybe not.
But, again, I guess if we get, start getting an issue with them, perhaps then we can revisit other provisions of it, perhaps?
Bars are down, I think, in a lot of, I mean, it's tougher to reel it in than to just not open it at all.
Okay, I'm going to say we'll probably not take public comment, because we really need to get moving, either to go ahead and adopt, or to refer back to our Planning Commission, I will entertain...
It seems like you have a lot to say about this. Do you have anything that could...
I don't think I have anything to add that I've said already. My concern really is, is, you know, preserving the, the, private ownership rights are very important to me, yet it is a balancing act, keeping that balancing with being a good neighbor and things like that, and so I, this is, to me, this is overreached by the state once again, and so I'm just not on board with it at all.
And if... But that's the existing...
No, I'm okay with the existing. I'm okay with the existing, I'm not, I'm not down for this.
Even though we're legislatively required to reduce barriers to this kind of thing, it's...
Correct. My eyes are wide open to this.
Okay, just checking.
Two points of clarity, and I think I may have asked them previously, or perhaps someone else did, but this, for clarity, this only impacts low-density residential.
Correct, correct.
And the undue burden that we were speaking of has not been tested, this is just recommendation.
Right.
Okay.
It's new, that's right.
Yeah, that's what he said. We'd be the, we could be the guinea pigs. I will entertain a motion. This would be ordinance 1386, since we didn't have a 1386, so.
Since it already has 1387 on it, just to use that number.
I will use 1387, because that's already on the paperwork we have prepared. So, ordinance 1387, and ordinance adopting amendments to Title 18 of the Monmouth Zoning and Development Ordinance relating to accessory dwelling units, and/or a referral back to planning, or some other thing that is your desire, my friends.
To move this forward, I will move the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1387, and ordinance adopting Legislative Amendment 19-01 and modifying standards for accessory dwelling units.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 1387. All in favor, signify by...
Roll call? Roll call?
A roll call.
Soon as...
I know, I wish I took a bite.
Sorry, didn't mean to move so fast, Phyllis.
Counselor Sharmar. Counselor Lopez?
No.
Counselor Belts?
Yes.
Counselor Schenkel?
No.
Counselor Carey?
No.
Right, we have three yeses and two nos, so we will...
Other way around.
No, we have three nos and two yeses.
Three nos and two yeses, so it does not pass.
So, that does not pass. I will accept another motion.
Skip number...
Oh, yeah, don't need number four.
We need a motion to maintain the status quo.
No, you're just not changing the code.
We just don't change.
Okay. I'm just seeing if there was another motion to refer, or...
To refer it back.
But we can't really refer it to what?
It's done, yeah.
And if I could just say one quick thing, I know I voted yes on this, but if you Google my last name and the Journal of University and College Student Housing, you will see that I've published research showing that when students live together in this kind of an arrangement, they're much more likely to abuse alcohol than if they live in a single residence.
All right, so we have one other item of business, which we will not do at this point, because we were going to adopt a fee for something that we do have not adopted as an ordinance. So, at this time, we have a work session item to consider, and we also have executive session, and so we can take another quick recess and head to the back, or we can stay up here.
We all meant to approve staying past 10 o'clock, I heard that once. Is that an urban myth in Monmouth?
Sorry, and I mentioned a few minutes ago, I was trying not to do that, however, because we were warned that tonight would be a pretty long meeting, and we have some very important business that has to be conducted in executive session.
So, this is an urban myth.
We're going to have to stick it out.
Okay.
So...
What is the work session?
Our work session, right. Our work session item this evening is just a brief discussion about maybe some changes to our Main Street District, and kind of give guidance, so it's not really a motion, it's about giving some direction to staff, and if folks want to take a second before we discuss that, we can, otherwise, if you have thoughts about it, you kind of want to move those forward. This was a part of a discussion that we had regarding a specific request, and it sort of made us take a look at some additional changes to our Main Street zone or district. And we do need Suzanne, so we're waiting to get her back.
We just went right into the work session?
Sorry, yes.
Didn't do council comments, you didn't read the executive session script.
I, you're right, I need to read the script before. So, I'm going to pass on council comments tonight, but I will read the executive session script before we move to work session, that this evening, City Council will meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing O R S 192-662-D, Labor Negotiator Consultations, and O R S 192 dot 6602-H, consultation with legal counsel. The executive session is held pursuant to O R S 192-662-D and 192-662-H, which allows the council to meet in executive session. Designated staff will be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience will be asked to leave the room. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of executive session, we would return to open session, we will welcome the audience back into the room. This evening, it is not anticipated that we will be taking any action after executive session. So, now...
Last February, the council initiated an amendment to our city zoning ordinance pertaining to the Main Street District and that area of application of where geographically we defined the Main Street District, and this came about through some discussion that staff has been having with the Ron Wilson Center, they're interested in expanding their use, their office building on Clay Street, but they're on the south side of Clay Street, and so they're not currently eligible for that Main Street District, because the boundary is written such that it's Clay Street North, that is part of the Main Street District. So, they asked before they apply for a zone change to the Main Street District that we kind of consider and look at amending that language, so it would be clear that they have a path for applying for a zone change to the Main Street District. So, Planning Commission has held two meetings, both in March and April, to look at some language, and we came up with kind of two options, and they're pretty similar, so know that these aren't two revolutionary, different approaches to the code amendment, just some kind of slight nuances or differences in the way they're written. So, I wanted to review those, kind of check in with you before we schedule any formal public hearings for adoption, that we're all kind of tracking on the same page. Exhibit one, if you can turn to that, has the two options shown there in bold underline. underline. The first option would be to replace the area of application language to just a real simple sentence saying, properties that are designated Main Street on the zoning map are, is, those are the properties that the Main Street District applies to. So anytime there's a zone change to a property, to Main Street District that's approved by the council, the council, this is the deciding body for those zone changes, then they are part of the Main Street District. The option two, this came about, there was some concern on the Planning Commission discussion about, well, maybe that might be a little broader, then we don't necessarily want people on the other side of 99 applying for the Main Street District designation, because they're not contiguous with the current Main Street District. So we had some discussion about that, like, well, would that meet the zone change criteria? Because it's not really consistent with the purpose statement of the downtown, so was that likely to, somebody would apply for that? But we still looked at some language in Option 2 that would kind of rein that in a little bit more, so that future councils and planning commission would have even more specific direction on that area of application of the Main Street District is just applied to kind of the, the current geographic description, and then properties in the vicinity of the current Main Street designation. So they still, properties would still have to apply for zone change application to get into the Main Street District, but at least it's very clear now with this language, or at least I think it's very clear. Okay, that, that they have a path forward where they can at least apply. Right now, it doesn't even look like in our code, they have a path forward for applying for it, so that's what we're trying to do there. And staff is, you know, really, I have a strong opinion about either one. I think normally I try to go with a simpler code language, because it's less words to get challenged and debated and misconstrued, and, and it doesn't require us to go back in and amend our code and going through a passing in ordinance if we do want the downtown to continue to grow and thrive, which I think is the goal. I will say, not trying to drag this out, but we did have two work sessions on it, so we, so we got a chance to, to really get into some of the details. We looked at kind of a third option of just legislatively rezoning Main Street District to include both north and south sides of Jackson and Clay Street, and I, I kind of put the, woo, it's a great idea, but we need a little more further study on the implications for transportation issues, non-conforming issues, so great thoughts, we need to get in and do our economic development planning further before we can, we're ready to have our ducks in a row for that bigger decision. So this is kind of that interim, we called it the Band-Aid code amendment, to, to get Ron Wilson a, a path to move forward with their expansion project. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Chris.
Much, much discussion has been had about different avenues to add properties to the, the Main Street District. Would, would either of these options make it easier for properties to, say, step out of the Main Street District? For, for that zoning district, such as, you know.
Probably the first option.
The loosening of that allow, would allow also.
Right, once the property has been rezoned, then we don't have to amend our ordinance to change, you know, the, the street description.
And would that then open up the possibility of, would that then open up the possibility of, you know, degradation of the concept of a Main Street District, if it makes it easier for, for, for these localities to, to step out?
To step out requires, again, a zone change council approval of that, so I, I.
What would be the impetus to step out?
If they wanted, I guess, to multifamily, you know, because right now it's just.
Loosening of design standards?
Or loosening of design.
But that would have to come to council.
Yeah.
Right.
But then, as, as council, wouldn't, aren't we bound by very strict regulations, anytime there's, you know, there's, there's zoning considerations?
You have, there are standards for a zone change.
Right, you have to be certain criteria.
It wouldn't necessarily be our will, if they can demonstrate the conditions had changed, we would be bound by that. So we're opening ourselves up to the possibility of being bound to allow properties to step out of that Main Street District.
If they can prove to your satisfaction that the criteria.
Yeah, I don't know if that's anything different than now.
Yeah.
Right.
They still have to satisfy you, that the criteria.
But, but now our, the, the Main Street District and the zoning, it is geographically limited, so they wouldn't be able to step out, because that geographical limitation doesn't change.
They, um, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that we would, could deny an application just because their property was included in that geographic description.
Yeah, frankly, it would be much the same kind of conversation we're having now, about adding.
Going through and showing whether or not meets the, the criteria, that could be one of the criteria considerations. That's, that's kind of one of the existing criteria, anyway, it'll get surrounding uses and what's compatible.
I, I guess my, my, my concern revolves around the possibility of this, the possibility of this weakening our Main Street District, and not necessarily something that would happen right away, but looking forward into, into the future, what this opens up for. No, it's late, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, and, and we can table this for later. If, if people felt real strongly one way or the other, then we could go forth, but if not, then we can always get more.
What, what, what I'm interested in doing, just for my own sake, and, and I, I think probably there's others as well, I'd like to be able to take care of the Ron Wilson people. I'd like to get that moved, you know. Now, I also would like to have a robust conversation, beginning at planning and elsewhere, to take a look at expanding our Main Street area, to include, and, and I think we'd want to look at what the implications are, exactly to your point, Suzanne, what are the implications if we were to go both sides of Jackson, both sides of, of Clay? And what would that do to existing property owners? What, what kind of opportunities would that give them? And.
What kind of requirements would it impose?
And what kind of requirements would be foisted on those that are currently there? And then how would that impact property value, should they sell? I mean, there's a lot of things, and to your point, it, it requires that. I would like to have that discussion, so we can expand. And we talk about the business and retail people, where are they gonna go? They got no space. You know, now, if we were to expand over to there, now you can, some, there's some professional opportunities there, and a lot of different things. So I, I guess that would lead me to number two, would be where, where my, because that's, that would, you know, because we're dealing with properties in the vicinity of the Main Street District, we're specific to that, I gotta get far-flung all over the place. I don't know, is that right? Would that be the most specific to getting, taking care of the Ron Wilson application?
Either one will take care of the Ron Wilson application.
Either one.
Yeah.
The only thing that won't is, well, the delay taking care of them is going through a whole zone change study and going through the, changing the Jackson-Clay boundaries.
Yeah, 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 oh, yeah, yeah. I want to get this one done. Yeah, because that's a long one there, that's a long discussion.
I'm, I'm with you, John, I think I'm, I'm liking Option 2.
I, I think Option 2, you know, basically keeps it as it is with, but provides the provision for, you know, properties in the vicinity. Does that sound okay?
Well, and, and so the only thing about Option 1, that really makes simple code language, it allows us to get this going faster, because.
Oh, there you go.
Option 1 allows that path, but it simplifies the code language to describe the area, we can move forward until we take on a bigger review, is one way I look at it, too.
But see, the, but the area of application is in, is in current code, I mean, there might be.
It replaces us with the boundary found on the zoning map behind us, behind them over there.
From, from what I understand, that either of these equally, you know, is equally expedient for, for the Ron Wilson issue.
Well, I'd, to that point, then I'd, I'd defer to Suzanne, what, what is, or Stephen?
Yeah, Planning Commission was, this'll be helpful, divided equally on the issue. So that's kind of where we're at, was they, they both work, one, just Option 2 reins it in a little bit more on future councils, that, hey, we really just want it in the vicinity of this area, versus Option 1, leaving it a little more ambiguous, so.
Motion to direct staff to, to schedule a hearing.
We don't need a motion, we just direct staff.
Which option?
Two, I'm with two.
So your, your setting is your preference to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission still has, they haven't had a hearing yet?
Right.
Yeah, so you're indicating your preference, they'll still have to make their own decision.
Right, recommendation, they'll review it through a hearing and make a recommendation.
If consensus is have a move forward with two.
Yep.
That's mine.
John, Chris, Byron, Stu.
My preference is one, but obviously the will is two, so I'll go with that.
Laurel, do you have a?
That wiggle.
Preference here between one and two?
I said two.
Okay.
Don't, don't you forget.
Our planning chair is nodding that he feels guided.
You're gonna call for other business for the work session?
Do I need to write the, yes?
It's on the agenda.
Um, I, I'm hoping not to, I.
Okay, I just have a quick thing. All right, I was approached by, during the break, by one of our residents of Monmouth, who says that she lives on Walnut, and it's a dead-end street, and there's a neighbor who lives on Main Street, who has now made access through that dead end, bringing in trucks and various vehicles through there, and she feels that it's no longer a safe place for her children, and she wants to know if this is okay, or if it's legal. The address is 164 Walnut Drive South, and if somebody could look into that.
If it's right away, they can be on it, if it's not right away, if it's somebody's private property, they can.
We don't know. We don't know, there's, it's an absentee landlord.
Yeah, Laurel, the best, best way to get those conducted up here at the dais is, the best way to conduct those, actually, go ahead and have, just share it with staff, rather than maybe putting the person's address out, but they'll, they'll get on it, they'll look at it.
Well, she was gonna speak, she has to give her address, right?
No, they don't actually, they just need to say their, say the street. Yeah, thanks, Will, for getting that, so you can hand that off to staff, and I'll hand my others off to Phyllis, and I think now we are ready to adjourn to executive session.